Welcome to the March 8, 2022, 6:30 City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. And would you please join me in a moment of silence? And as we do, would you please note that today is the day that we remember all those we lost in COVID in the last two or three years? And it's also a good time, in my mind, to think of the people and the unrest in Ukraine. And please draw me in the pledge. City Clerk, would you please read the rules of speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens should not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions or requests, must address the pending issues, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers shall be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three agenda consent agenda items shall be limited to speaking for a total of 10 minutes regardless of the number of items. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city council shall be placed in the box on the table in the council chamber.
Thank you, City Clerk. Appreciate that. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special city council meeting of February 19, 2022? I have a motion from Vice Mayor and a second from Member Nelson. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Minutes passed or adopted. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel. Before we get going, staff would like to go ahead and withdraw 9E, and this was a request of the applicant to withdraw this item.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to do so?
Go move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. City Manager.
No special recognitions or presentations, and we are on Item 6A, which is the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. And council's task is to appoint one regular member to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals with an unexpired term to expire on 31 July 2023. This item was tabled at your regular meeting on February 8, 2022. You have three applications on file for your consideration: Mr. Nathan Slusher, Mr. Theodore Gerard, and Ms. Gina Beckles.
Thank you very much. I think the first thing that I would like to do is have each one of those say a word. Don't need a long speech if anybody doesn't like that, but just a word about who you are, where you're from, and what we can do with that. So I'll go ahead and start with Nathan. Mr. Slusher. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Nathan Slusher. I live at 860 Allendale Street. I do have a couple of things I want to say. First of all, I presented last time at last, at the last, no, it wasn't last meeting, it was two meetings ago, one month. And at that moment, my ability and my experience was questioning for myself. However, since then, I have gone back and I have reviewed the variances from last year. I've reviewed the minutes, the agendas, and there's not a doubt in my mind that I can keep up with this now. I certainly believe that I've had the experience to do this job and to sit on that board without a problem. So when we're dealing with sprinklers, or pool enclosures, or facility additions and setbacks, I actually can understand how it affects the neighbors, because I do this on a daily basis. So I like to be able to talk to people, and that's one thing I got really good at over the years. So I can see, okay, if you do this, how's it going to affect this? And I got that when I was reading the agendas and reading through the staff reports and how, how other people are affected is a major concern. I understand that now, and I can see that. So this month that we tabled this item actually gave me more confidence that I can do this. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? I see none. Mr. Garrett? There we go. G-A-R-R-O-D. I may be saying that wrong. I apologize. If I am. Got it. Thank you.
I pronounced it Gerard. My name's Ted. Theodore is my full name, and I appreciate the opportunity to be interested in the position that's open. I've submitted a resume. I've got some experience certainly in the area of Boards of Appeal, Adjustments, Urban Planning. Came here from California, 1957. Went to college, left, had a career, came back and resided in the home that I grew up in. So I've got a little experience in residential living in Titusville. I hope I can help if you choose me. I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I see no questions. And Ms. Beckles.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Gina Beckles, and I have a PhD in Public Affairs, so I'm very familiar with governance, city governance. I've worked with federal grants. I spent 13 years on the code enforcement board here, and so I'm very familiar with the code enforcement board and enforcing building codes and regulations, other types of regulations. If you've seen from my application that I actually have a certification in landscape design.
I saw that.
I never really exercised it, but I'm just very familiar with, with Titusville and how it's run. I was born here, my father was born here, my grandmother and my grandfather were born here, and my great-grandparents all moved here.
Wow.
So I've been here for four, I've been here for four generations. But anyway, I just want you to know that Titusville is at my heart, and I feel that I'm very qualified to serve on the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and I'm ready to come back and serve my community. Does anyone have any questions?
Member Nelson.
I do. Gina, if you weren't chosen for this board, would there be a different board that you might be interested in?
I might consider it possibly.
Okay.
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 That's a solid maybe.
That's a solid maybe.
A solid maybe.
It's a solid maybe. Any other questions?
I should have asked the others, but I forgot to. But thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beckles. I do appreciate you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Counsel, we have three very worthy candidates out there. I'd like to hear where you guys might be. Member Nelson.
I agree. I think there are three good candidates. I think Gina, we love. She's been on the Code Enforcement Board forever. She was on the North Pervard Charities Board forever, too. I think you're still there. And, you know, I, Mr. Gerard, he's a planner, so he obviously has that experience. So, and Nathan has a heart for it, but these guys have lots, lots, lots of experience. So to me, it's either Gina or Ted. Does that help?
Another solid maybe.
That was another solid maybe.
Member Robinson.
Yes, I, I do. I'm one of those who go with experience. I'm one of those who go with passion as well, and I see the passion of all of the desire. But I also understand that if you've been working and volunteering for the city of Titusville and done your duties and paid your dues, I think that that's, that's an opening of some, if you want to do something of a greater nature, so to speak, I think you should have that and, and move forward because you can bring your experience from one level of the city to the next level of the city, and everybody benefits from it, both those, both us and the city of Titusville. So if I had to, if my support goes with Dr. Gina and moving forward with that.
City Attorney, is your button pushed?
Yeah. The clerk was advising me, we have one card.
Okay. We're, look like we're about done with discussion. So with that, call the card.
Dan Johnston.
Stan, you want to speak? Come on up. Oh, yeah. Okay, here we go. Member, thank you, Mr. Johnston. Member Nelson.
So I would move to nominate Gina Beckles. Dr. Beck.
Dr. Beckles, yes. I have a motion to, for Dr. Beckles. Do I have a second? Let me, let me try that again. See, are you just wanting to speak?
I'll speak after.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll hold, hold on that motion and go to Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I, I'm caught between two lowers. I like the idea of Mr. Gerard because he is a certified planner. He had a lot of experience. Talking about who's, he's had a lot of, but I'm just, because of what the Board of Adjustment does, actually had with them before, I don't know, I just feel a little bit more comfortable with Mr. Gerard and Gina, just a little bit. That's where I am.
City Attorney, is this a situation where I can simply have the council say the name of the person they would like to have on the board?
Yes, sir. The way we've typically done it is you can call for nominations. We currently have one nomination. You can ask, are there any other nominations? Then close nominations, and each council member will vote for the, one of the individual's nominee.
Okay, we'll do that. I have a nomination of Dr. Beckles. Do I have any other nominations?
Nomination.
I have a nomination, try that again. Nomination for Mr. Gerard, Member Stokel.
Yep. I guess if we're moving in that direction to say who we're going to be choosing, I want to give an explanation. I will probably be going for Mr. Gerard as well, just for the fact that it is the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. And looking at the criteria, I would just say, again, to the Vice Mayor's point, I think he just has a little bit more specific experience in that area, though I would like Dr. Beckles to please serve on one of our boards as well with her wealth of knowledge and experience. So I just want to give an explanation for my vote.
Okay, is, are there any other nominations? Well, I had to first see if there were anymore, but now that we decided we're going to close it, do I have a second to close nominations? All right, nominations are closed. At this point, I would like to go roll call on the name that you would like, because we have two nominations. Okay, roll call, and it's not really a vote, it is a vote. State the name of the person you'd like to see in the position.
Member Robinson.
Dr. Beckles.
Member Nelson.
Dr. Beck.
Mayor Diesel.
Dr. Beckles.
Vice Mayor Jordan.
Yeah, finish the votes.
Member Stokel.
Dr. Beckles.
That's unanimous. Dr. Beckles, we appreciate you very much and your 13 years of experience and, and what you've done in this community is hard to overlook. I would say too, to the other two, Nathan, we see you all the time, and you're very interested and passionate, and certainly I look forward to getting to know you, Mr. Gerard, or, there we go, further. Your credentials can't be overlooked. At this point, I would say I was going with more city experience, and I appreciate all of you being out there. And we have, Dr. Beckles is our member. All right, City Manager.
Onto Item 6B, which is the Code Enforcement Special Magistrate. The Code Enforcement Special Magistrates semi-annual report is included in your packet with no action required.
All right. City Manager.
Onto Item 6C, which is the summary of absences by Titusville Environmental Commission Member Tuan Lee. Regular member Tuan Lee has missed three, now four consecutive meetings. A memo from the chairwoman of the commission is attached. In addition, he was not in attendance at the regular meeting on 9 February 22. This agenda item was tabled at the regular meeting on 22 February 22 at 6:30. Allow staff additional time to contact Mr. Lee to determine if he wanted to continue serving as a member of the TEC. Counsel had some questions as to whether Mr. Lee wished to continue to serve as a member of TEC. Different counsel requested staff to contact Mr. Lee. Staff has contacted Mr. Lee by as many means as possible, and he has not returned any of our calls.
Wow, that's, that's exactly why we tabled it, so we could give him a fair shot at whatever was going on. With that said, let me hear from Member Nelson.
Okay, so he did not contact staff. He did contact me, and he was in a meeting. He is out of the area. I think he was actually in California. So we were texting back and forth. He did say that he thought he was interested, well, he knew he was interested. He still wanted to continue with the TEC. He said that he's looking at rearranging some of his businesses to afford him more time to spend with. So that was his text back to me.
Member Stokel.
Did you tell him that we might be removing him from the board due to his absences by chance?
I told him that we were looking at it.
Okay.
Did I say, if you don't, if you don't call, I didn't do that.
No, I, I know him. I think his heart is in the right place as well. I think he does have the desire to serve, but I do know he is involved in a lot right now as well, and I just don't know if he has the capacity to do it, especially if he missed the last one, again, adding to that fourth absence, again.
He, he did say there were some things that he wanted to do. I don't want to really discuss them in public that would afford him more time to do these kind of things. And so he was working on cutting down that schedule so he can.
I guess you, you might know more than we do. I, if he is able to serve, I appreciated his passion and his desire that he had while serving, but if he's not able to, I'd like to get somebody else in there that might have a better time commitment and can attend the meetings.
I would agree. I would like to see him have one more chance, and if he can't do it, he can't do it. Then we start looking for somebody else. That's my thought.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, he doesn't, giving him a fifth time, I think, I think he's speaking loud and clear, actually. I mean, having desire to do it and doing is two different things, and we are trying to run a city here, so four meetings is a lot.
I'm concerned, we have tabled it, trying to give him an opportunity, and then for some reason, he's unable to be reached or contact the staff, who is who you would contact on that, and for whatever reason, he got in touch with you, which is great, but that's not exactly the way I'd like to see it happen. I'm also a little disappointed that we tabled it, let him know we've got some concerns, and hasn't contacted staff, and he's not here for us to ask any questions. I don't want to, you know, remove anybody who's got some real legitimate issues, but four meetings is a lot of meetings, and we're having a hard time running him down. So, Member Nelson.
Well, I think it's four meetings from, what was it, last June? June, July?
They're, they're four straight meetings.
Oh, okay. And I will say, I had no problem contacting him. I sent him a text message, and within three seconds, you know, he acknowledged that he was in a meeting, but he's like, yeah, I can text you. So I had no problem contacting.
Let me move to cards. We have cards?
Dan Johnston.
Maybe we'll get a little something here.
I'm Stan Johnson here, and I've, and I've talked with him also, and I want him to be retained. He's a very special person. He knows a lot about, a lot of things that we don't know about, a lot more, because he's Vietnamese. And he's been over there with Agent Orange, and he's got a lot of, you know, still got contacts there. So he would be of great value to us here. We're having problems, and he knows about problems. And he's, and I think he's, I want to say he's especially motivated because of his heritage. So I would like you to retain him, and I think you'll be making a mistake if you do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, please.
The last card is Tony Shifalo.
Tony Shifalo, 715 Tropic Street, the fabulous Norwood House. Normally, I kind of agree with Stan on a lot of things, but I kind of disagree on this one. I serve on one of the citizen advisory boards, and in the three years that I've been on the board, I've missed exactly one meeting, and that was predetermined because I play in a band and we were out of town. Titusville, for some reason, doesn't hire my band locally, but you should. I would be in town more often. This man was my neighbor, and although he did a fabulous job in rehabbing the house next door to my historic house, I still feel that if you can't make the time to make your commitments and show up at your board meetings, then what good is it being on the board? I think that three absences is excessive, and that not showing up at the very meeting where your repositioning or your reappointment was being considered is a big social, if not political faux pas. And I would vote against placing, retaining this person on the committee when there's many people out here who not only have the experience and the education that Stan pointed out that this person has, because he is an engineer, but that many other people would serve better on the TEC. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Robinson.
We have one additional caller.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Mary Marie.
My bad.
Good evening. My name is Mary Marie, 1765 Lakeside Drive, and I just wanted to comment that there seems to be a pattern going on of circumventing the rules that are in place for these committees. And this would be the third one that I've seen come up in my tenure of watching these procedures. My understanding when I joined a committee was it was three absences and you were out. Now we're making exception to that. On the TEC, it was one member of the TEC that was supposed to be also coordinating and a member on the planning and zoning. That got changed. There was a period of time in which there was a discussion about if you lived outside of the city limits, could you still be on planning and zoning? Why set the rules if we don't follow them? And that's my only concern. I think it sets a precedent, and it sometimes feels very political, and so I'm very, very concerned about that.
Thank you. Now, Member Robinson.
Yes. As you probably know, rules is my cup of tea. If you set them, you have to hold to them. I think that he's a valuable resource, and it's nothing that would prohibit him for lending his guidance and his knowledge to the TEC Board. But as far as filling the position as a TEC member, you need to be there and play the role that you have been assigned, my thought. But he still can be an influence. He can still help. That's my thought.
Okay, no more cards, right? All right, so Counsel, we need to decide, are we going to move forward? And I will hear what you have to say, and I'll go with my direction. I will just say off the top of my head, I tend to agree with Member Robinson. I think that we went and went out of our way to table this last time, because, I mean, you don't know what's going on in somebody's life, and we still don't really know what's going on that has caused this. So I'm tending to, to lean towards, we, you know, we, we have some rules, and we've given an opportunity to reply, get with staff. They've got phone numbers at work here, and you know how easy it was to get in touch with him. I have nothing against him. I don't know him personally at all. I'm sure he does a great job, but you got to be, you know, I, I've always told my, my coaches, basically, you know, the most important thing you can be, be there. And if you're not there, the rest of it doesn't matter. So with that said, Member Nelson.
I hate to lose him, but I tend to think you guys are right, and perhaps when he gets things straightened out, he can come back.
Totally. Open arms, nothing, nothing against the situation.
Yeah, and you're right.
So then I think we need to move in a motion sort of way here. And.
How is that said?
City Manager, City Attorney.
Right under the rules, when you miss the three, it says you're automatically forfeit your spot, but counsel can forgive those absences. So if you're not inclined to do that, the motion can be not to forgive the absences and that he would forfeit his spot. We would advertise for someone to fill that position.
Okay, that's my motion.
Okay, Vice Mayor makes the motion. I need a second on that motion. Member Stokel has a second roll call vote.
Member Nelson. Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yes. And that motion passes. City Manager.
Onto Item 6D, which is the North Pervard County Hospital District Board Semi-Annual Report will be presented by the Vice Chair, Mr. Stan Retsch.
Now, who's going to assist here?
It looks like.
Good evening, honorable Mayor Diesel and councilpeople. I just came up with that term tonight.
Councilpeople.
Councilpeople. Yes or no? No. Councilmen and women, members of council. I am Stan Retsch, and I'm the Vice Chairman of the Parish Medical Center Board of Directors. It's my honor to present Parish Medical Center Semi-Annual Report. A written report has been provided that summarizes the activities and outcomes achieved by Parish Medical Center since our last report. I will briefly highlight what was provided within the written report. First of all, on the COVID front, Parish Medical Center's COVID-related hospitalizations have reduced substantially, making it possible to resume normal visitation policies. This has been a challenging two years for all first responders, and on behalf of the PMC Board, I want to extend our sincere thanks and appreciation for the collaboration and sharing of resources during the COVID surges. for the collaboration and sharing of resources during the COVID surges. Despite COVID, Parish's leadership has been able to address other community needs. On March 5th, Parish Health and Wellness Center opened at the Target Shopping Plaza. The 5,500-square-foot Wellness Center offers members the ability to reserve an individual exercise pod, decreasing the hassle of sharing and waiting for a machine, adding a layer of protection while exercising in your own space. The Wellness Center features individual exercise pods, a variety of cardio, functional, and strength training, personal training services, private restrooms and showers, as well as other amenities. We encourage anyone who is interested to check it out. You can find more information on the Parish's website at parishhealthcare.com. Many people have asked about what's going to happen with the former Health and Wellness Center on Highway 50. That center is being converted to an orthopedic and sports medicine center of excellence. Construction is underway. That center will feature orthopedic and medical services, physical therapy, rehabilitation services, athletic training, injury prevention and treatment clinics, as well as other services. In addition to expanding our orthopedic and sports medicine programs, Parish continues to enhance our cardiovascular services. PMC introduced another first in the treatment of advanced heart disease to Brevard County. It is called Shockwave Intravascular Lithotripsy, or IVL. IVL. IVL was approved by the FDA February of 2021 to treat complicated heart disease, and was performed for the first time in November of 2021. This new technology uses sonic waves to break up calcium deposits in arteries that cause heart attacks and strokes. PMC was also the first in the area to offer the world's smallest pacemaker, the MicroAV. Under the leadership of interventional cardiologist Dr. Bijou Matthews, Parish looks forward to continuing to advance its cardiovascular program to make sure our community has the best heart care available anywhere, right here, close to home. From advancing medicine to advancing community-based health and welfare programs, Parish continues to make a difference. Each year, tens of thousands of dollars are given back to the community in the form of charitable and civic contributions. Some recent examples include Parish's sponsorship of the Brevard County Schools Thrive by Five Initiative. This program ensures every member and every family in Brevard has access to early literacy and school readiness resources beginning at birth to set them on a path for lifetime success. Studies have shown that nurturing a child's cognitive development within the first five years of life makes a positive and lasting impact on overall health and wellness that follows them throughout their lifetime. And while there's a strong collaboration across education, healthcare, and social services, we bridge gaps and connect families with needed resources. Parish has committed $50,000 over five years. That impact, that will impact an estimated 25,000 Brevard families throughout Brevard County. Parish is also proud and honored to be among the many community partners who supported the rehabilitation of the 100-year, 100-year-old Carter House into one of Central Florida's finest Boys and Girls Clubs. It features a music studio, STEM lab, after-school sports, and tutoring. The Carter House and Carter Family played an important role in Titusville history, and now it's home to the Boys and Girls Club, and will play an integral role in shaping Titusville's future, thanks to the vision and leadership of this council and many supporting partners, one in particular. In addition to the Thrive by Five Initiative and the Boys and Girls Club, Parish was recently a founding member of the Friends of the Children's Advocacy Center of Brevard Ambassador Circle. Parish partnered with the Children's Advocacy Center to create this premier giving level. The Ambassador Circle serves as a group of businesses and investors who pledge $10,000 or more over multiple years. Parish has committed $50,000 over a five-year period, and those funds will help to expand access to child protection services, such as socialized mental health counseling, specialized mental health counseling, medical exams, forensic interviews, consultation services. Twice a year, Parish partners with the Titusville Police Department and the DEA for the National Take Back Events. These events provide opportunities for citizens to safely dispose of unwanted medications and prescriptions with no questions asked. This helps keep these drugs off the streets and makes our community safer. These examples underscore Parish's commitment to healing families, healing communities. Lastly, Parish has continued to recruit new providers to our community. We recently welcomed Dr. Patel to Parish Medical Group's Family Practice, Dr. Holmes to Parish Medical Group's Occupational Medicine Practice at Port Canaveral, and Dr. Schaefer to Parish Medical Group's Orthopedic and Sports Medicine Practice. Overall, since September, Parish has added 21 providers to its medical staff, representing a full range of medical specialties. This concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to do my best to answer them, and if I can't, I'll get you an answer.
And I don't really have any questions. I, I tend to say something at the end of this report because I can't help it, but thank you, Parish, for being our rock in, in the storm. Having gone through COVID the last several years, I think we all looked to Parish Medical Center and to the people of Parish in our insecurities. So I thank you for that. I thank you for your community outreach, your community health and wellness, your community caring and sharing, and for being an integral part of our community and our family. And for me, I really, really always want to brag on those Christmas fireworks. Those are amazing. You can get closer to those at any. But, and, and I say that, you know, with a little humor, but at the same time, all the stuff that goes on and the sadness that we've all experienced in the last several years with the COVID, there always seems to be an oppor, if there's an opportunity to bring happiness and joy, you guys are there to try to do it. And, and that's just part of being part of the community, and even more importantly, being part of the Titusville family, the North Brevard family. And, and I can't thank you guys enough. So with that, Member Nelson.
I wasn't going to say this, but since you guys are here, and I have to say thank you for the help with the Carter House. We're up to 35 kids and rich. We're trying to keep the numbers a little bit low until they get a second staff person. But I got, I had to tell you, I said, I'm only going to do good news tonight. I have, I think we have enough bad news. Turn on the news, and it's...
Try to turn it off.
Yeah. It's not good. Channel 6 called me, sent me an email the other day, and they want to come in, and they're going to do another story on the Carter House. So they're coming Thursday.
Fantastic. That is good news. That's awesome.
I'll make sure they take a picture of the front door.
Member Robinson?
Yes. And what I want to say is that in my 24, 25, 26, 27 years working here in North Brevard County, I want to say about Parish is that they always were there to hear what I had to say. They didn't, they didn't support everyone. I can say that 75% of my endeavors, they did support, but they always listened. And when you have someone that is always there to listen to you, they may not agree, but they're willing to give you an ear. That's what they've done for me and my efforts to try to make a difference here in Brevard County, but especially here in North Brevard, and I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor.
I was contemplating whether I should say anything or not, being on the board, but I will tell you, in all the years that I've been on many boards, for sure, when you're looking for a class act, just look no further than Parish Medical Center. The leadership on there with George at the helm, and Natalie, Edwin, Chris McAlpin, all-out doctors and nurses, they've gone through a lot in the last couple of years with COVID, and they did it in a classy way. And if there was ever anyone in the public and private sector that needed anything to ensure their safety, then Parish was right there. We spent a great deal of money making sure that everyone was safe, and we spent a great deal of money making sure that we could keep as many people alive as possible. And it, it took a lot, for sure. And most of the people who work at Parish were working many, many, many hours, and most of the public never see exactly what's going on. And, you know, most of the time, when you have a machine that's running well, people think it's easy. But in fact, it's extremely hard to keep something like this around. Healthcare is extremely important to everyone. You know, you may complain about things, you may say this or that about any organization, but I will tell you, at the heart of Parish Medical Center is a heart. And you can never forget, when it comes down to saving lives, you can't go to a better institution than Parish Medical.
Thank you. Anybody else on council? Then I'd conclude with kind of where I, where I started. I think that every family has that, a rock, somebody who's the strongest person. And I can tell you, in my family, it's not me, it's my wife. And I mean that seriously. And when I look at Parish Medical Center, and, and Mr. McCarterian, and all of you, you're, you're the rock of our community. Where do you need your rock? When things aren't going well. When do you need your rock? When there's a hurricane. When do you need your rock? When there's a pandemic. You're a rock. And, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. So with that, not adequate, but thank you very much. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Stan. Well done. Couldn't have done it without you, though. Okay. Petitions or requests from the public, please.
Hi. I'm Mary Murray, again. 1765 Lakeside. I'm here for requesting assistance or guidance. And what you're going to see in front of you is a survey, and then a couple of online forms that I did, asking for assistance from the city. Let me give you a quick summary. My husband and I moved here in 2019. We currently pay over $5,000, or $4,000 in property taxes every year. We don't have a problem with that. We've made $150,000 worth of improvements to our property, and we think we live in one of the most beautiful neighborhoods in Titusville. In 2020, we found that we have about 75 feet of sidewalk that stay underwater for over four months, about six to eight inches deep at times. And I think it's a combination of a lot of things that create it. So I did an online request during the pandemic. It was interesting. And we had three different people from three different departments come out and tell us it was not their department, it was someone else. And we waited. In the meantime, someone came out and replaced a section of sidewalk, which we hadn't requested, that made it worse. But they did a great job. So like I said, we spent about four months impassable. We've had two people slip and fall and come up to the house to mention they slipped and fell. In 2021, I again did an online form and requested assistance, and somebody came out and video at that time, and we never heard anything again. In the fall of 2021, we had quite an extensive flooding situation going on, and having done a large storm water systems in my past, we went out to try to kind of figure out what's going on. And my husband spent the whole storm standing across the street with a rake, clearing leaves, making sure water goes down. Because what happens, because of a hump in the road, a speed hump, everything funnels down around that speed hump, including all the leaves. Again, we didn't hear anything. So in December of 2021, I called the city, and I was transferred to four different departments, and everyone said, we don't know who that would be. So I called the city manager's office, and you were on vacation, but Virginia talked to me, and she said, we will get on top of this and call you back. And we never heard anything. So the, this page is my final request, trying to say, okay, we've been at this for 19 months. Can someone call us? We've got pictures, we've got videos. My husband and I are both engineers, so we think we might even have solutions. During this period of time, the boulevard, no, I'm a northerner, so I call it a boulevard, so hopefully you know what that is. It's the grass between the sidewalk and the street. We've had people visit our neighbors and have to have their cars towed out.
City managers, is there any direction you want to give us on who you can contact?
Sure, we'll have Public Works get ahold of Ms. Murray.
Say that again now?
We'll have Public Works get ahold of Ms. Murray.
Okay. That'd be Kevin. Okay. So, there we go. I'd give you extended time, but we'd break the rules, I don't know.
Very nice.
I'm just kidding. No, but this is well done. This is very in-depth. I personally like the red, so I can see it.
Thank you.
But, and I appreciate the documentation of that. So things happen sometimes. I don't know all what happened, but it sounds like you still need some help. So I appreciate that City Manager will have Kevin get with you.
And we have started the transition out of Titusville, and we don't want to leave this undone.
Wow.
Because of the, we just don't want somebody to start this process over.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Wow. Very nice. Next up.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council. Edward Newman, developing at 2000 Shepherd Drive. Unfortunately, here to chat about tree survey again. I thought we had this wrapped up at the last meeting, but when I was provided copies of what was the new code, there seemed to be some significant discrepancies from what was my perception of closure at the last meeting. So prior to the February 22nd meeting, we're provided with two proposals, one of which was called Return to the Original Survey Requirements, which was exactly that for commercial industrial. And the other was Recommended Ordinance. So my understanding was that's what we were discussing, the staff recommended ordinance, when it came to all the review and conversations we had. Based on the published minutes from the meeting, there were three items that were discussed, two of which made perfect sense and follow what we ended up with in the code, and the third was about the 14-inch and 20-inch trees. And I thought we were all on the same page, that for a commercial property greater than five acres, we were only going to need to survey 20-inch trees. Well, lo and behold, the code now has in it two old sections, which require what I'm effectively going to call the survey of all 12-inch trees on the area to be cleared, which is the development area, which is the majority of the property, six acres for us, as well as a requirement for surveying of 6-inch trees in either buffer areas or 20-foot from the property line. So my kind of questions and concerns is how did we end up back? You know, we, the discussion seemed to be that 14 didn't make sense, since there was no requirement to act on anything from a 14-inch survey. And yet, here we are back at now a 12-inch survey that's the codified requirement.
Staff, Ms. Musaka, we have anything we're going to return on that, because obviously I don't have that answer. Go ahead and stop the clock. Thank you.
After the ordinance was, ordinance 20-2021 was adopted in September, the staff came to you and said that we felt that the council direction was that there would be no changes for commercial and industrial uses. And so at that time, we asked for advisability to put together an ordinance which would go back to the pre-September 2021 ordinance requirements for commercial industrial. The information that Mr. Newman is discussing is exactly the language that was required prior to the September ordinance adoption for properties of 10 inches and greater, I'm sorry, 10 acres and greater. It requires trees 12 inches DBH and greater to be, that are going to be removed, to be flagged or painted in the field. It does not require a survey of those trees. It does require location of all mitigation-sized trees, which are 20 inches and greater for these commercial properties, to be included in a survey. And it does include the location of trees 6 inches DBH and greater in buffer areas or 20 feet from the property lines. So what we have done is to go back to the original language for properties 10 acres and greater that are commercial.
Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor.
Yeah. The bone of contention actually is, and I understand his challenge, but if you remember when we started talking about this, I really don't want to talk about this, but I'm going to talk about it anyhow. We were having discussion about making sure we just deal with the low-hanging fruit, and somehow the commercial got involved in it. And we agreed together that we would go back to the old requirements for the commercial property. That's what happened. What Ed is talking about is, well, there's wording in there that he doesn't believe was in there on the original property, but my understanding, it was definitely there.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
For sure. So if we wanted to change that, my question to you is, what will we have to do? Will we have to go through this whole thing again?
Yes, sir, you would.
And I don't think anybody up here want to do something like that. So we got a challenge, because we want to make sure that we're doing everything we possibly can to make sure that the developer is successful under the rules that we have. But I hear what he's saying. He didn't believe that he was supposed to take care of the six inches. But in my mind, we're being pretty reasonable. Anything that we do other than what was previous old ordinance is going to require us to go back basically square one.
Yes, sir, you'd have to reopen the ordinance, and then it would be, all of the issues could be re-discussed as far as that goes.
So, Mr. Ed, I think you heard, well, councils can speak for themselves, but you all tell me how you feel about going back and doing something.
Lights are lighting up, so here we go. Member Robinson.
Yes, I'm back. We deliberated, agonized, talked to everyone that we could talk to, including Santa Claus himself. And we came up with, that was what was best, that to try to make everyone come to an agreement. We can't go back and change the rules every time someone comes in and don't agree with them. We have to stand fast. If we came up with that decision, let us live with it. Somewhere down the road, we, it caused hurt, harm, or danger to someone, then we will consider it. But otherwise, we stay with the rules that we went to and said, I understand your position, but law is the law. That's my thought.
And Ms. Botan Busaka, you noted that when we talk about the misunderstanding, it really, there really shouldn't have been a misunderstanding. We went back to what we said we were going to do, and nothing changed.
Yes, sir, that's correct for the properties that were ten acres and greater for commercial. And it was simply an error on staff's part that it wasn't done the first time.
And that, at the last meeting, when we went to the amendment part, that was exactly where we were going.
Yes, sir, it is.
Member Nelson.
Ed, the last time we went through this, we're talking three years. I don't think you want to wait three years for us to do it.
I'm a year into this myself now. I mean, my question then is, you know, there was definitely discussion about the fourteen-inch requirement. That whole discussion, it was functionally moot then, because if there was already a twelve-inch requirement that was going back in, the fourteen was completely irrelevant.
So I think the problem was, we were talking commercial, residential, industrial. And so we have always said that we were not going to touch the rules for industrial. And I would hate to see you work on this for another three years while we're working on changing something.
And I hate to bring it up, but there actually is still another piece in there that was added for industrial. We already did it, so I don't care. But we're not quite back at zero.
Don't bring that up.
You good?
Yeah.
Member Stokel.
Peggy, if you don't mind, I think it would be helpful. Can you just summarize what we did discuss at our last meeting when we were debating with the twenty-inch and the five acres or greater? Just to clarify.
Of course. Prior to 2021, the requirement was that for all properties that are five acres and less, that they had to survey trees that were, I'm going to get this in front of me, survey trees that were twenty inches, and, I'm sorry, six inches throughout the entire property if you were five acres or less. If you were twenty acres, I'm sorry, ten acres or more, you had to go to twenty-inch trees plus six inches along the buffer area. And it did allow for the larger properties that you would have an aerial photograph. So what, the way that the staff has used that, utilized that aerial photograph is we've asked for one hundred by one hundred-foot samples in those, of the aerial photographs, so that we have a general sense, rather than going out and surveying those large properties. When the property, when the ordinance was adopted in September of last year, the survey requirements became the same for the residential that were meeting the mandatory canopy coverage. And that's where the council's direction to staff wasn't being followed, because the council's direction to staff is, we don't want to change the playing field for commercial and industrial. So when we came back to you, we said, we are going to follow your requirements. In the midst of reviewing this, we realized that we had actually made things easier for those smaller commercial properties that were less than five acres by reducing that to a fourteen-inch rather than the twenty-inch. I'm sorry. Yes. Yeah, by the, fourteen rather than the six-inch. And so what staff said was that those smaller properties, especially commercial, have much less flexibility in how they can locate things on. So we recommended this kind of compromise. But in the case of Mr. Newman, who has a ten-acre parcel, he is, he is in the same situation as he was on September the twenty-seventh of 2021.
But he wouldn't be if he had less acreage.
Correct. He would actually be to some extent, and better off, because he would not have to go down to the six inches. Mr. Newman did provide us a tree survey, and it was created on September the sixteenth of 2021. Unfortunately, at the date that it was created, it didn't meet the code. I think it was Mr. Newman's intent to try and assume what was going to be adopted by council and to move his project along as quickly as possible. But it did not meet the code in time for the 2021, September of 2021. It didn't meet the code that was in place in October of 2021, and it doesn't meet the code in place today.
Okay. So all the changes that we did, because we didn't, we went back to the old ordinance?
Yes.
None of the changes we did affect this particular piece of property?
Correct.
Okay.
If the twenty-inch survey was done, because that was what was required for the pre-app process.
Okay.
Okay, so that met the code for the pre-app, not for the final app.
That's correct. Yes, but it doesn't, but unfortunately, he's in the process now where he wants to get a site plan. He's moved through the pre-app.
Correct. And yeah, now unfortunately, being, it used to be your advantage to be larger, because you had more to do. Now we're actually disadvantaged being a larger property, surveying at, I'm going to call it surveying, it's not technically surveying, but it's the same functional process and same cost for twelve-inch trees versus fourteen-inch trees now. So that's my dilemma.
Well, it's not quite the same. I mean, but you don't have to show us a survey, you don't have to have a surveyor go out there and identify it. You simply have to flag those or paint those which are greater than twelve inches. So I could take a tape measure, I'm not a surveyor, and I'm not a landscape architect, I could take a tape measure, I could figure out what twelve inches is, and I could put a flag in the ground. And that would be adequate. It is not the same as a survey, which is required to have a surveyor seal.
Is that just for the buffer or the whole property?
That's for the entire, for any twelve-inch tree and above that's going to be removed.
Okay.
Which for us is six acres.
Yeah.
Okay.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah. Can you feel me?
Oh, trust me, I can feel it on this. You know, the question is based on the discussion that was had, what's in the record?
Right.
Is there any possibility that there is, you know, go back to my language from my former experience, a technical correction that is possible, that you're not re-advertising it? Is this the wishes that the council had for this six-inch and twelve-inch requirement? If it is, then it's correct. If it's not...
My understanding, and my briefing, et cetera, is I don't see it as incorrect. And I can tell you that we've been through this round and round from all the developers over here and the tree team over here, and three, not three o'clock, but one o'clock in the morning. And I don't see an error, I see maybe a misunderstanding, and it's not a survey. I know it seems like that, because you got to go look at them. But it's a lot different than having to get a surveyor, and you can spray paint it or put ribbon around it, or whatever you got to do. So at this point, I certainly don't see anybody inclined to say, let's do this again.
Well, the requirement is provide a written evaluation of the number of trees to be removed and reasoning for the trees in the proposed layout. Flag all trees. So, you know, again, it's something to start to say, it's over my head in terms of skillset, I'm going to leave it to a professional. And then, yes, it's hiring the same professional that would do it. They do not have to provide the dots on the plan, they have to provide written narrative in lieu of that. But functionally, from my, you know, reality, it's me paying somebody exactly the same amount of money, they're going to go out there and they're going to charge me based on how many twelve-inch trees they find.
Vice Mayor.
Ed, I'm going to ask you again, do you feel me? Okay. So I think we just want to go forward. I think you need to hear from council, we believe that what staff did is exactly what we wanted them to do. And if we were to even open this thing back up, it would be more than two months. How long do you think it would take?
Two years.
Two or three years, yeah. You don't want to wait that long, and we don't want you to wait that long. So unfortunately, we got too much.
Understood. And that was my big concern, is getting, you know, the feel from you that this is what you, you know, expected.
Yeah, it is. And I can tell you, like Member Robinson said, you kind of half expect somebody's going to run into that unique situation, and you seem to be that guy. And I hate that that's happened, but I also understand that there's going to be somebody in there, we can't change it every time. That is what I expected. And I was trying to listen hard to where the misunderstanding might have happened. I'm not exactly sure yet, but I do know that that's where I thought we were.
I think that there were a lot of different versions. We had, the TEC wanted something, the P&amp;Z wanted something, and I think that that certainly added to confusion in my life and perhaps others.
Well, it certainly did, but I remember all of us stating, what a great job you did of hearing everybody. And then putting it all together in one big summation of this is what we're looking to do. And I don't feel like we have the mistake or misunderstanding perhaps, but maybe it is a misunderstanding, but there's no mistake, that's what we were looking at. So with that, thank you, and I hate that that happened to you.
Thank you.
But that's where we're at. Thank you, sir. Petitions or requests?
Tony Shifflow, seven fifteen Tropic Street. I'd like to just point out that after the three years now that the tree team has been operating, and that the council has been dealing with this, that I want to say, first of all, I appreciate your standing your ground in view of a developer coming to you and wanting to change things yet again. I want to point out to everybody in the room, both the elected officials, the staff that is hired by the citizens of the, of the city, and the residents who are out here behind me, and remind everybody that the reason behind the tree team working to get the ordinance passed was to save the environment of Titusville. We don't want to stymie growth, we want proper growth, regulated growth, growth in the direction that the citizens of Titusville would like to see. And they've been very vocal, because we've raised a lot of issues, both with the Indian River Lagoon and the dying manatees, the tree team, the massacre of trees at the Winn-Dixie parking lot. There's been a lot of public attention, and there's a lot of public support for maintaining the nature that brought a lot of the citizen, a lot of the resident, a lot of the people to want to reside here in Titusville. I mean, let's face it, there's not great shopping here, there's not great mountain tops to climb like in other places. We have a lot of beautiful, wonderful, natural environment that we're losing due to a lot of thoughtless development. And I'd like to just point out that the purpose of the tree surveys is so that staff and planning and development, people who are giving the permits, can interact with the people who want to tear down trees and build something, so that they can work together to say, okay, well, this tree is significant and should remain, and if you just slightly moved over, or if you gave up one parking space, that blah, 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 the trees, the canopy could be, and, and most people would be happy with that. So I just want to remind everybody, the reason for the survey is so that we can save the environment, save the Indian River Lagoon, and keep the nature that people have moved here appreciate and want. So let's remember that when we're dickering about, well, six-inch trees, fourteen-inch trees. And remember how old these trees are when they get to be fourteen inches. They're very, very old.
And I'd be remiss in terms of reminders if I didn't say that we have great shopping in the city of Titusville with my Chamber of Commerce there. We have great restaurants, and to my knowledge, we are the only council who passed a tree ordinance and a low-impact development in the same year. And quite honestly, I like to think that it's a we thing and not a me thing, so sometimes when you say the tree team, we were here too. So, and you just saw, we're hanging there. We're, we got it going on. So with that said, I thought that was a good thing to say. Marcia, we have great stores in this town. I know, but I know how you're feeling about that right now. Next up, petitions or requests? There he is. Been a while. Here he is. No pressure.
Pastor Anthony Johnson, twenty-two thirteen Harrison Street. First of all, I just want to introduce myself and the foundation family. We're a new church in town. We've been established since December thirty-first, 2020. Amen. I want to say, first of all, thank you, I appreciate everything everybody does, I appreciate everybody's agenda. My agenda is the well-being of the citizens of Titusville. I know we got a lot of things on the plate, I know everybody has a lot of concerns, but the one thing I never hear us talking about, the things that's happening that affect real lives. There are people dying, kids, on a regular basis, and we're doing nothing. I appreciate everything, but we need to start dumping some of these resources and ideas into strengthening our community and inspiring our kids. Our kids are doing what they're doing because they're uninspired. And if the kids are uninspired, we got to look at us, the leaders. So I'm still learning how this city council thing works, so y'all excuse me and forgive me if I'm out of place, but I want to challenge the city of Titusville to work with us community leaders to come up with some real, some things that's really going to make a difference, other than just throwing words and phrases and slogans and parades and marches, throwing that stuff at it. My family, we're already doing a thing called Grill and Give. You're invited. Every second or fourth Sunday, one o'clock, Sam Point, we're giving. We're starting, one of the things we want to start, we're going to start, is a vocational class for tech for the kids, and I want it to be free. So if you have anything that the city can give, buildings, property, funding, whatever, I challenge you to help us, because somebody has to step up for the ones who are not being stepped up for. Everybody comes in here, and I appreciate it. I love animals, so I appreciate everybody coming in here fighting for humanity. I understand that this is a business, so I appreciate everybody coming in here for business codes, trees and all that stuff. I have no quarrel with that. But we got to start talking about the people of Titusville. That's all I got.
Well, I appreciate you. Hold on there, just hang out. First of all, I appreciate you. Most people on TV can't see that, but you guys have been here a lot.
Amen.
Gosh, I guess it's been about three, three or four months now, it seems like. And it's always great to see you guys there with a positive attitude. I consider all those words positive. I feel like, you know, my life is about working with kids, I don't have all the answers, but I will give any chance I got to get with any kid at any time. And I certainly don't mind going to your barbecue, I just got to remember to get out there. But that being said, your presence alone says a lot, your presence in the community. I've been fortunate to know you for a long time, but I don't, but I don't know you, like you're talking about, what a concrete aspiration to start a vocational program of some sort. And I don't care... And I don't care if you get three folks to show up. You know, it's kind of like the starfish saying, you know, there's thousands of starfish on the beach and they're all dying, and the little girl throws one in and throws one in, and a guy comes jogging by, says, why are you doing that? There's so many of them. Then you're not going to make a difference. I did to that one. So the one you threw in, you made a difference. The young men or women that you get a hold of, and I can see the heart that's out there. I appreciate that. I do hope to get with you guys. I mean, I'm running as fast as I can right now, but I hope to get with you guys.
And the door is open for all of you.
Thank you for being here.
Anybody out here?
Wait, we like you enough. We got more people. Don't leave. We got more. Member Nelson. Member Nelson and Member Robinson.
One thing to you.
I know it looks like we're up here not doing a whole lot for community and our kids, but I don't think that's true. We started a Boys and Girls Club. We have 35 kids signed up right now, probably 17, 18 showing up every day. Kids six to 18, teaching STEM program. One of our really great music teachers, he and his friends come over and teach music once a week. We have 3D printers and all sorts of technology that I don't understand. I just want to go and see what they're doing. So as a council, we agreed to help support them, and we also turned around and gave them money for counseling. I think that community counseling for some of those kids are really important. So we're doing that. Officer Taylor.
Oh, yeah, I know Officer Taylor.
Is running a program for kids.
And this wasn't to say nobody's doing anything. I hope nobody took it that way, because that's not what I'm saying. But I am saying that there's a lot of things that's going on in this community. And just, I can be, I can be honest, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
From my shoes?
Yeah.
You ever seen, how many of y'all seen the movie Boys in the Hood? And at the end of the movie, Ice Cube says either they don't know, it doesn't show, or they don't care about what's going on in the hood.
Yeah.
That's how it feels. Maybe that's not true.
That's true.
But you got to understand, that's how it feels. When you see the same thing over and over again, and you see it not getting better, you don't see the preemptive response that should be there. Because all the things that you've mentioned are great, but they're not in that community.
Yeah.
No, 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 I know where that building is.
Yeah.
But trust me when I tell you the kids that that building needs to be reaching is not reaching, because first of all, I didn't know that's what it was.
Communication.
Right. And see, and that's, and that's part of the problem. Because here I am, lived here all my life. I played on that park majority of my life. I never knew what that building was. And then to find out that it's been refurbished and to be used as a Boys and Girls Club, tonight was the first time I've ever heard that.
Yeah.
Wow. They'll communicate.
And I got to tell you, there's some really wonderful people that have come out of there and out of the different Boys and Girls Clubs. For our district, we have 37, I think it is. Shaquille O'Neal came from the Tap Boys and Girls Club. Valerie Demmings, Gary Demmings, Verlinda Rowland, Lisa Bell, who's one of the reporters from the panelists. They all came out. So it's a slow start, but I think between, between us, we're going to make an impact. Right, Willie?
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, I am.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I'll put in my two cents what I feel is necessary.
Okay. Member Robinson.
I've been in the business, and you know, one of the things that I tell my congregation, I said, stop bringing me children, bring me the parents. That's what we need to do. Every, for 20, 30 years since I retired from the military, I've been working with children. But my greatest effort and accomplishment has been when I change a parent's heart. So let's focus in on the children, but you got to get the parents and the household.
See, I understand there's a bigger picture, and there's all sorts of answers and ways to approach this situation. And this is what I'm talking about. This is what I want to start, some kind of conversation where we start working together and these things don't be a mystery to the community. Because for a lot of the kids, a lot of the parents, they don't know a lot of this stuff exists. And you got to also take in consideration, the parents ain't up to par on a lot of these situations. Let's just be honest. They're not looking for it. So sometimes, yes, we can go to the parents, but sometimes we got to be the parent. It takes a village. We got to start making excuses of why this can't change and start making the effort. If I can't reach the parent, I got to reach the kid. If I can't reach the kid, I got to reach the friend. I got to reach somebody that's going to change somebody. Amen? Because I'm going to be, I'm going to sit down, but I got the scariest phone call in my life this past week. The scariest phone call, I lost my brother in 2016, and they called me and told me they was resuscitating him. I thought that was scary. But I got a phone call from my daughter that said my grandson was almost in a situation by his own choice that would have involved a gun. And my grandson is a good kid, straight A on a roll, exceptional athlete. He has the, I'm, I consider myself the man in his life, so I know he has a good upbringing. But just that quick, it could have changed. So again, it's the inspiration. We got to start inspiring these kids to want more, to do more, to be better. They got to know that they have more opportunity than Blues, the corner of D Leon and South Street. They got to know this. And I'm not blaming anybody here for any of these situations. I just want to join in where I fit in and work with you, and I want to see the city put forth some good faith, good faith effort in helping us solve these problems. Because I don't care what anybody thinks that is happening in this neighborhood, but sooner or later, it's going to knock on your door. Because if you haven't noticed, they're getting more brazen about when and where they're doing these things. It used to be you only had to be worried at night in the neighborhood. Now you could be shopping. Feel me?
Absolutely.
I'm good. I just wanted to, mainly, I just wanted to introduce me and my church, let y'all know why we're coming, but that is our agenda.
And if you get the opportunity, you'll see me at the Gibson Football Clinic going on at one o'clock, one to four, J T Hassel. It's kind of a hope football clinic. There's going to be a lot more than just football, but it's a tool. And I've tried to use that tool for 40 years, and I'm still using it today. But I appreciate that. You know I do.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up. Yeah, well, I've seen, I know what you're doing back there.
Stan Johnson, I'm here to talk about SNJ Oaks, which I've invited all of you to come and visit it with me, and you haven't done it. And so the client's pretty much given up on me, and so because I've been ineffective and blacklisted and so forth, so I'm no longer have a client out there, although I'm a professional engineer. I want to report to you about some of the things that, some nonsense is going on. For example, we have plans that don't show the numerous sewer and water services that are going, Mr. Stauffer should be listening to this, is that they're going to be crossing and they're going to be conflicting with the storm sewer. I don't know if you're listening, Mr. Stauffer.
There, over here.
I think that's Mr. Stauffer.
No, we're good. Let's go.
Hey, Mr. Stauffer, wake up.
Stan, up here. You can't talk to them.
Well, he should be listening to this because he doesn't, he doesn't get to return my calls, and this, this is a serious issue. And so just recently, they finally provide utilities to the, on February the 23rd, they finally required utility easement to these properties. That's after over six months of time, which we should have been done a long, long time ago. So right now, we have a 12-foot, first of all, started out eight-foot roadway, and now it's gone to 12-foot roadway for these, for these properties that are R3. And I can't get a response from, from how in the world the city can allow R3 to be a 12-foot wide. Also, on the same, same set of plans, it says the fire department requires 20-foot width for a pavement access, and then they're getting 20-foot for the, over at least 20-foot for the townhomes and only 12-foot for the, the R3 properties, two houses there. Doesn't make sense to me. A lot of things aren't making sense. And I talked to the surveyor, and he's, he's not doing any more surveys. And I said, did you really do the survey? He said he did the survey. However, I measured the, an angle, and so has the city, former city surveyor, and we come up with a very different angle, significantly different angle. And I filed, if you know, I've already filed an affidavit of that it's a fraud, it's a, it's a fake survey, and I've reported to the board. And the city doesn't seem to care about it, although the city has information that shows also that the angle is incorrect by 36 minutes, a huge error, a huge, well, the guy didn't do it. He never did survey. So I am, I am completely shocked that the city is proceeding on a number of things. In fact, for example, they got a drainage structure in the pond, and it's underground. You can't get, can't get the water to it. That's the design. And yet, it's according to the people, I understand is that it's about ready to be approved with all these problems in it. So I'm asking for more time because I'd like to, somebody to say something because I've blacklisted on that.
I see no extended time, sir. Thank you. Petitions or requests? All right, city manager.
Onto consent, which is items 8A through 8L. Council, are there any questions that you would like staff to answer before consent?
No, sir.
Council, is, do you want to pull any of the items for further discussion?
I see none.
Clerk, are there any cards on any of the consent agenda items?
I have one card for item 8E, another individual that signed up for eight items, and then I do have a card from a Renee Stewart that I'm unable to identify which item they wish to speak on. 8A, that's okay. So 8A for her.
So with that, mayor and council, I'd like to read the titles for the record, and then we'll do the cards.
Yes, thank you.
Consent agenda item 8A, approve the art building, art league building lease. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the American Rescue Plan Act extension of the farmer's market memorandum agreement with the Greater Titusville Chamber of Commerce. Consent agenda item 8C, approve the donation of a deadline EPD K9 vehicle to Ovechokee Sheriff's Department. Consent agenda item 8D, approve the student advisory council scholarship policy expenditure. Consent agenda item 8E, award the contract for the acquisition of the LED replacement sign for the Titusville Police Department. Consent agenda item 8F, approve the FY 2023 Community Development Block Grant, CBDG, and Home Investment Partnership Funding. Consent agenda item 8G, sorry, approve Resolution 5, 2022 Code Enforcement Lean Amnesty Program Extension. Consent agenda item 8H, approve the citywide vehicle purchases. Consent agenda item 8L, correction, 8I, approve purchase of block safety camera system utilizing forfeiture funds for the Titusville Police Department. Consent agenda item 8J, approve the city computer network performance professional services contract. Consent agenda item 8K, consent to give the city attorney the authority to bid at public auction, on the public tax deed auction on March 17th, 2022, for Sun Valley Partial's lots 15, 16 of block 72. Consent agenda item 8L. Approve Amendment 1 to the Human Resources Employee Benefit and Risk Management Consulting Services with Robinson Bush Consulting, a Division of Digital Insurance LLC, and authorize the mayor to execute the amendment.
Thank you, council. Any questions? I see none. Clerk, cards, please.
Renee Stewart for item 8A.
Hello, my name is Renee Stewart, and I'm the president of the North Provence Art League, also known as the Titusville Art League. And the reason we're asking for a 10-year lease instead of a five-year lease is that we're trying to apply for a grant from the Florida Department of Cultural Affairs. And we're trying to get a facilities grant, and they require that you have a 10-year lease in front of you in order to receive any funds. So we're trying to get a matching grant so that we can put new AC systems on the building and hopefully repair the locks and do some roof repair. As per the lease, we're keeping up the building on our own expenses in lieu of paying any rent. So we're happy that you're looking at this and considering it, and we hope you continue to support us if you have any questions about what we're doing.
I see no questions, and thank you. Appreciate your words on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next card, please.
Nathan Schlescher for item 8E.
8E. I thought it was B. Okay.
Nathan Schlescher at 860 Islando Street. I'm speaking on 8E. It also applies to 8I, but I only need to say it one time. I'm speaking in objection to this on the basis that it's forfeiture funds, and I know that forfeiture funds are a very heated topic around the country in reality. But here in Titusville and in Brevard County, I know it is a questionable topic. I would not personally support using forfeiture funds for an LED sign. However, if the police department needs an LED sign, then I'd definitely say we support them and get an LED sign. I would just, I would advise that we alter the motion and use it for, use general funds to pay it and not for forfeiture funds on ethical discussion reasons. And I know that tonight, we are not discussing the ethics of forfeiture funds. We're only discussing buying a sign and a camera or the safety camera system. So my suggestion would be to use general funds and then use forfeiture funds if they have to be used legally, and I would have to refer to legal for that. If they need to be used before they're gone, use them out in the community. Take the funds that if they came from something that was bad, use them for something excessively good, not just a new sign. If the police party needs a new sign, then we buy a new sign. But use those specific funds that have a specific background for something with a better future. There we go.
Next card, please.
Received another card from William Young for item 8H.
8H.
Hello, I'm William Young, 612 Indian River Avenue, Titusville, Florida. Been here since 1957. Okay, I see that you're going to get some vehicles on number H, and it doesn't say what kind of vehicles, just says they're going to go to a bid process for vehicles. So I didn't know what they were except it's for, whether it's electric, gasoline, diesel, biofuel, or what kind, or bicycles. It could be very expensive bicycles for the police department, so, or water department. So I was curious, what kind of vehicles is it?
City manager, can you help me with that?
The vehicles are a mix of SUVs, which are flex fuels, so they're partial electric, partial gas, and then there are three heavy trucks for the water department.
So they're hybrid electrics?
Yes.
SUVs?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Next card, please.
The last card is for Stan Johnston, which has signed up for eight items.
What were those eight items? Do you have them?
Do. It is 8A, 8C.
C.
8F, 8G, 8H, I, J, K.
That's eight. Ready? Yes, sir. Start the clock. 8A. No, nine. Um, the vehicles are a mix of SUVs, which are flex fuels, so they're partial electric, partial gas, and then there are three heavy trucks for the water department.
So they're hybrid electrics?
Yes.
SUVs?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Next card, please.
The last, um, card is for Stan Johnston, which has signed up for eight items.
What were those eight items? Do you have them?
Do. It is 8A, 8C,
C.
8F, 8G, 8H, I, J, K.
That's eight.
Ready?
Yes, sir. Start the clock. 8A. No, 9A.
8A, 8A, 8A. All right, 8A is, uh, um, I approve that, of course. Uh, 8C is, uh, I approve that also. Uh, 8F is neutral, 8G is neutral, 8H is neutral, 8I is neutral, 8J is neutral, 8K is opposed. So let's, let's, let's go a little bit into 8, 8K, and also 8J is, uh, uh, regarding the data communication, is that, uh, my concern is, we do have problem with communication, just as I, I've shown you this, this Titusville, uh, cover-up of, of, uh, numerous utility issues as far as the sewage into the river and, and spraying people with the sewage. Uh, we have a lot of communication, data communication, and right now, I can't get, uh, for example, Mr. Stauffer to return my calls. I call almost every, like, every day for the last several days, and I don't get anybody from Water Resources to return my calls. So we have a blacklisting of me, which I think is, uh, inappropriate. And I just told you before, as I, I just lost a client, which is understandable. I'm ineffective if, if the, uh, city, uh, blacklist me, and it's, it's working. It's working. Uh, and, uh, I've called a number of times for the city manager to respond to issues of my client, and, uh, uh, nobody calls. So, uh, uh, it's, it's not right, and,
Yeah, go ahead. Um, point of order, um, stop the clock. I think that, um, it's gonna wanna know what number you're on, and, yeah, absolutely. You come to J, and then that was about computer network performance, and you gotta kinda talk about that.
Yeah, so, so, so I'm talking, I was talking about communication, and, uh, uh, and in this case, is, is that, uh, as far as communication, we, we're, uh, in other words, if we're gonna spend that much money, is that we ought to at least train some people, and that they can, should return phone calls and so forth. In fact, is, is that I've been, uh, for example, when I worked for the county, they had a program in which you learned how to answer the phone. And in this case, is that I leave messages, for instance, to the city manager and so forth, and, uh, I don't get returned calls at all. Nobody from, nobody representing the city government at all. Now, same thing with Water Resources. Nobody, nobody calls. So it's, uh, it's understandable that I, I, I've lost a client. I mean, I'm completely ineffective. I don't think it's right. I don't think it's fair, but that's the government of the city of Titusville.
Stop the clock. This is good for petitions and requests. You can bounce all over the place there, but we've got letters here you need to, and you do a good job when you talk about them.
Okay.
So hit me with some letters and give me your feeling on those. No more about, no one's calling you back. That's a good petition and request area.
Okay, all right, okay.
Thank you.
So what, what did you mean by letters? What was, I didn't understand what you meant about letters.
Uh, you've got, well, you said eight, but you've already hit two that you didn't have.
Oh, the letters, in other words.
Yeah, so you, you signed up for FGHI, and when you say neutral, I'm not sure why you signed up for them, because that means you don't really have anything to say about them. So go ahead and, and hit, hit me with something.
My, my clock is still, in other words, I don't think it's fair that my clock is still running.
Well, you just, you, let's go, hit one, go, any of them. Tell me which one you're gonna talk about.
Okay, uh, the, uh, let's go with 8K right now.
K.
And although my times are used up.
Yeah, I'll keep going.
So, so on 8K, it has to do with some, some, um, uh, block, some, some, two parcels that we wanna maybe bid as much as $3,000 for, and they're adjacent, the two other property lots that could, that I don't see why, they just can't be used, and it's, it's just, it seems like just a redundancy. And, uh, and it's done by, uh, this same person that I was talking about just now, and that is Mr. Stauffer, is that, uh, he just doesn't respond. In other words, Mr. Stauffer is the, is the guy who's right here. Right, oh, let me lift this up. Stauffer has to do with, you know, filling millions of gallons of raw sewage into the Indian River, and not, and, and, uh, consent order that denies it, and he's responsible for spraying people with cars, babies with, with, uh, park fountains of piss and poop.
Stop the clock.
For greater than four months. That has to do with very much with the guy who's doing this. In other words, we're giving Mr. I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead. Okay, we're giving Mr. Stauffer this responsibility, and he's goofed off on just about everything. He's messed up on everything.
All right, try J.
Pardon?
Go to J.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm standing on K right now.
You still on K?
Is, is that, uh,
Well, when you're talking about pee and poop.
It's the same guy, it's the same guy I was talking about who doesn't return calls, he doesn't respond, who, in, in other words, like, for example, I, I have a job, I'm a professional engineer, and Water Resources Department, where are they? Where are they? In other words, I leave calls. It's the same thing that happened even back when they had the sewage spill. Back this, you know, as, as I told you before, is, as far as communication and everything, and as far as what, what Mr. Stauffer's doing, he's doing a horrible job, and, and as far as what he's gonna do with this public tax deed auction, I don't think he should be in charge of it at all. He really shouldn't be. I don't know, has he done anything right? I'm sure there must be something he's done right, but as far as I can see, is, is that he's bungled and fumbled. I mean, big things, million-dollar items, million-dollar items. I mean, th- this is a horrible health hazard that, that we had here happen, this Mr. Stauffer is in charge of, and everybody thinks he's wonderful. I don't think he's wonderful, but, uh, I'm sure his wife does, but, and his children, but, uh, other than that, is that, uh, it's, it's a horrible thing that's going on here in the city when we have, when, when we have somebody who's a professional engineer, and he's doing what he's done, and he, for example, he's, he's, he's put me in a situation that I'm blacklisted, then just like, for example, I'm not even allowed to even go to the Water Resources Department. I can't walk in the building. They got a warrant against me, trespassing. I can't go into the building even, just the mayor.
Yep, I got you.
Thank you.
Uh, you, you, uh, stop the clock.
In other words, you ought to get rid of it.
Stop the clock, stop the clock.
Sorry.
I think that you've made that clear over and over again, and I certainly will have to, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that Mr. Stauffer does a good job in so many ways, and, and I can't get into all that. But what I can do is tell you that you've got eight choices here, and I need you to talk about one of them. We got four minutes left, and you're gonna run out of, and then you're gonna say you didn't have enough time to talk about them.
Well, okay, apparently, from what you just said, Dan, you understand is, you're saying he's a wonderful person.
I'm telling you that you need to talk about one of these. Let's start the clock and pick one, any of them. Go.
Dan, Dan Diesel just said how wonderful job Sean Stauffer is doing. I just, we just heard it. We just heard it. And I'm thinking, where, what planet is Mr. Diesel on when he says that kinda stuff? Really? Really? How can you say that?
I, I got you. Now I'm gonna ask you to just pick one. You picked eight, and you haven't talked about, about one, and that one really was very vague. So pick, you got all these letters I've circled, and you're not talking about them.
Well, I'm responding to what you said.
Uh, that's fine.
Which, in other words, you said, you said, apparently, uh, that this is what, the way Mr. Stauffer is, and apparently, I haven't made my point at all. In other words, I'm trying to make a point to you that, that, my goodness, you're way, you're on another planet.
Let's.
I mean, so is the, you're, you're on a completely different.
Stop the clock. Yes, sir.
I, I would wish you don't even stop the clock, because this is unnecessary, and, um, talking about staff has nothing to do with any of these items at all. And actually, to correct him, um, this is about the attorney going to bid on something, not Sean Stauffer. So you're way off base there. So I would wish you would just pick the subject you're gonna talk to, and just talk about them, and stop being so negative. Just talk about what you want us to listen to you about. We're here to listen to you. But unfortunately, sir, you haven't said anything that I wanna hear. You know you don't wanna hear it.
Start the clock.
I know, I know Mr. Jordan doesn't wanna hear it. I mean, he's, in other words, Jordan, Mr. Jordan was, had been a great friend of mine, and, and what did he do? He betrayed me. He just, I, I can't believe it. Went to, went to church with him, Promise Keepers and all kinds of things. What does he do? That's just what kinda stuff he does. Okay.
Yes, stop the clock. Last time we're stopping the clock. You got two minutes and 55 seconds, and if you don't get back on topic somehow, we're gonna be done before that.
That the topic is, is that, is that indeed, what Mr. 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 Jordan said is that, is that, is that to talk about Mr. Stauffer, it's got nothing to do with this. He is in charge of this, Water Resources. He is the one who's making the recommendation. That's who's doing it. It's got a whole lot to do with him. He's the one who's in charge of it. In fact, is, this is the well field, as far as I know, is not performing at all to speak of. It's just, just a ridiculous well field. I mean, it, it was been closed down for I don't know how many years it's closed down. I don't know what it's doing now. Maybe it's performing something. But it's, 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 it's a boondoggle. This particular well field has, has, has not really been performing as far as any reports that I've seen. And we just keep on, we keep on, as, as if, as if it's doing something. Heck, it started out, y'all don't know this, that, well, you know, that, that's going off the subject, but this, no, it's the same well field. The same well field started out, it's people, as it was, they, they overpump some stuff, and they pump down a bunch of ponds on people's private property, and people over in Indian River City lost their wells, and they had to stop pumping. That was never published in the paper. No, sir. That was hidden. So, and that's what we do, just like it says on this sign, says Titusville cover-up. That was another cover-up to city Titusville. Right now, we're involved in a cover-up of the, of the effectiveness of this well, well field. That's what we're doing. That's what, that's what we're doing. So I'm against this. I'm against this. That's another reason. The well field really hasn't been performing. And what it is, it's a cover-up, another cover-up that the city of Titusville's doing, on this well field right here, that, that item number 8K.
K, okay.
And, and I think you should, should really look into it, and seriously look into it, because what is it? We don't want to admit our failures. We wanna cover them up, and that's what we're doing right here. Right here on this item, we're covering up, um, a, a failure of the city of Titusville. This well field has been a boondoggle. And this is just part of the cover-up. Say, hey, well, we just bought some more lots for it. Okay? Maybe I'll just cut it short. Would you like that, Mr. Dan? Okay, I'm not gonna do it, because, because he doesn't want it. And I know Mr. Mr. Jordan, because he already just said a bunch of things that weren't true.
Fifteen seconds, you could go ahead and cut it short.
So, uh, so, uh, thank you for, for allowing me to, some time to, to express this dissatisfaction and some truth, because we need some truth here.
There we go.
We're not getting it. We're certainly not getting it from Mr. Stauffer. We're not getting it from our city manager.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Um, I'll speak to that later. Uh, go ahead, sir.
Thank you.
Um, any other comments or cards or anything? All right, can I get a motion?
Vice Mayor Jordan.
Yeah, go ahead, please, please.
Stan, I'm, I really want you to help me, but you coming up here babbling doesn't do me any good. I'm just a country boy. So stop babbling, state your point, and just go forward. That's all I ask. Just go forward.
All right, let's go. Um, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, and, uh, council, I move that we approve, uh, items 8A through 8L.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, uh, roll call vote on consent agenda.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Consent agenda passes unanimously, city manager.
Uh, we're on to item 9A, which is the public hearing for the local housing assistance plan years 2022 to 2024. It's the ship program. Staff is requesting that council approve, approve the local housing assistance plan and adoption of the associated resolution, and authorize the mayor to execute the corresponding resolution. Additionally, staff is requesting authorization for the neighborhood services director to sign the associated program documents and certifications, and submittle of the same to the Florida Housing Financial Corporation for approval. The deadline to submit the city's, um, local housing assistance plan is May 2nd, 2022, and Terry's here to answer any questions that you may have on this resolution.
One moment.
Good evening.
Hi.
We do have a presentation for you to just, uh, go over the ship program, um, to get everyone familiar with this, because we only do it every three years. Um, so we'll give you some information to help us through the process. So our state housing initiative partnership, uh, every three years, we have to develop a local housing plan that will, um, lay out how the city may use its ship funds over the next three years. So tonight, as the city manager stated, uh, we're here to present the LHAP for adoption. Uh, there is a adopting resolution associated with that that will go to the state and a public hearing on the LHAP. So just a little bit on the guidelines for the LHAP. It is due in May every three years to the state. The LHAP does detail the expenditure of the city ship funds. It sets aside maximum awards for each strategy that's in the LHAP. Um, we have waiting list and priority details, um, project delivery cost. We have details on the terms for each strategy, so each strategy will carry a lien period with those strategies on the properties. Just, these are some crucial points when we develop our LHAP, that 65% of the funds must be set aside for home ownership activities, 75% for construction activities, 20% for special needs population, and unfortunately, we have a maximum of 25% for rental housing. So that does, uh, kinda tie the purse strings a little bit. Uh, the city averages about, well, right now, 300,000 was this year's allocation, but the, over the last five year, five cycles, it's been like 60,000. So we're hoping that's a sign of ship funds, funds coming back, and we will know come July what that funding is like. So when developing this plan, we based our estimates on current allocation for this year, and, um, cross our fingers. So we have a housing element in the ship LHAP, which, um, is designed to steer us for affordable housing projects. We look at the housing stock that Titusville has, the age and condition of that housing stock, what today's housing demand is, and the projected demand over the coming three years of the plan cycle. Ship statute requires that we also include a green initiative design feature to incorporate green building principles and any activities that we have for rehabilitation or new construction. That outlines some of the green, uh, things that we have included. Special housing needs, each, again, the ship statute, um, we can develop and implement local housing assisting plans to create affordable housing, which is the main purpose of the ship grant, for those that have special needs, including but not limited to the homeless population, the elderly, and farm workers, and persons with disabilities. So to developing the programs, we identify what those needs are, and we evaluate the programs that have, um, been completed over the last three years to help us design for the next three years. Then we go look to implementation of those programs. Um, we implement the strategies that we gain from the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee staff, elected officials, public input. We monitor our outcomes every, as we go through each year of the three-year cycle. That gives us a time to reflect on what worked and what has not. So in the LHAP, uh, for the next three years, we have our emergency repair program. Um, for this three-year cycle, we are looking to increase the maximum one-time assistance level. Currently is $5,000. We are proposing $10,000 due to inflation and unfortunately COVID-related, uh, issues with materials cost. Our next strategy will be our housing rehab program. It will serve our very low and low-income populations, maximum assistance of 70,000. That includes all soft costs for recording fees and administrative fees. And we have, you see the terms there, it is a 0% loan, and it can carry a 5, 10, 15-year term, depending on the amount of assistance. We are building in this LHAP, uh, this round, a annual adjustment for inflation so that we don't have to come back and rewrite, um, the plan should we have another inflation. Strategy three, uh, for the next three years, we'd like to include an affordable rental housing development strategy that will be designed to increase the availability of affordable rental units, that will assist housing developers and, uh, with associated permit. permit and utility connection fees, not so much limited to those, but any pre-construction cost or fees that the program can cover up to $50,000. And then we have our first-time home buyer program. If you recall, um, at our last meeting, we talked about the purchase price cap with our home grant funds. Um, this is a way to try to alleviate those issues when the prices of homes continue to climb. With the ship program, the purchase price is, uh, a greater than under the home program. So we'll be able to utilize both home and ship, um, for that initiative. We are required to have a mandatory strategy in the plan for disaster recovery. Anytime there's an executive order by the president after a disaster, this strategy is available to residents, up to $5,000, uh, to help with emergency-type, um, assistance, and that is a grant. There is no term for that. So part of the administrative functions of the ship program obviously is our day-to-day administrative operations. We do manage the contracts and construction oversight. We are required to track our expenditures and our side-to-side requirements for the program, and we monitor all of our subrecipients, uh, that receive ship funding, and there is an annual report required to the state each year. The ship program allows up to 10% for administrative budget, and that budget would cover these And that concludes our presentation, and we'll be glad to answer any questions you may have on the, uh, ship LHAP.
First of all, I want to say thank you for doing what you do every day. It's certainly one of those things that I think we were talking about, Member Nelson in particular, that as a city and a county, excuse me, as a city and a council, um, we do what we can, and and there's some low-income housing examples there, and that's certainly not something that gets out there and, oh, we do this, we do that. But I do know that we and I send an awful lot of people to you for those needs at the Harry T. Moore Center on DeLeon. And for you to be there, and I can tell you recently, I've sent you some of my former students, one by one, who have homeless issues, and I appreciate you reaching out to them and contacting them. And again, that's not something that, you know, everybody gets a big pat on the back for you, but I do want to say I know it's there and I appreciate that. Uh, Member Robinson?
Yes, Terry, you probably know that. Terry, that, uh, the money, 300,000, if you and I were talking about that, uh, ten years ago, we would be thinking that we had a lot of money to do a lot of stuff with. But now, uh, we, 300,000 is not, and I see that you have the figure of $50,000 per individual or per proposal. Is, uh, how is the relationship with the county? Is the county able to, uh, willing to partnership with some, uh, programs, or have you seen anything like that, uh, nowadays, so to speak?
Yes, we continue to participate in the home consortium, uh, so that we can partner with the county and get those, uh, additional home funds. Um, also, there are special grants coming up in your previous agenda item tonight for the CDBG and home recommended funding. Uh, there was a part of that in there was for the upcoming home American Rescue Plan dollars. Um, we anticipate part partnering with the county on that to help with the affordable housing issue for the homeless.
You think that that includes the city, man, you think that that's going to be a possibility to, because I, did I hear before that we couldn't merge those dollars, or we, it looks like in the future, we're going to be able to merge some of those dollars? Because one home basically is costing, will use a low figure of 200,000. And if you merge all of the dollars, you may be able to do some good, but if you can't merge them or use, uh, the rescue dollars, ship dollars, as well as the home dollars together, we're not going to be able to do very much.
The home American Rescue Plan dollars is separate from the treasury dollars the city's currently working with. So it's a separate, um, allocation. The ship program, um, the state does allow consortiums with that, but we have not, um, talked amongst the other cities about creating consortium for ship.
And I would suggest that if you're going to, because of the amount of dollars that you have, and it's it's going to have to take some partnerships and some creative ideas. Also, is that, now I looked at the list of what you could use the dollars for, as the pastor came up, uh, earlier, and he, uh, got some, uh, great energy and some good thoughts. Uh, is there going to be any way that, uh, you can, um, fix some proposals that he may have to, uh, use some of those dollars or some of the dollars that the city may have?
That would be more suitable through our CDBG program, uh, where we have the public service, uh, dollars that we do annually. We also are expecting to do some requests for proposals for certain services coming with the American Rescue Dollars, so we certainly, um...
And I wanted him to hear that, so that, you know, with the ideas, uh, where you can get some resources, is resources. All right. Thank you.
Uh, Member Nelson?
Terry, I had a crazy idea.
Uh-oh. Again, again.
Actually, um, I will confess, I already talked to Scott about it, and I think he was shaking his head, but, um, I was out in Seattle, and Seattle is building tiny homes for homeless people. And my understanding is, in terms of sheer cost, is 50, 60,000 bucks for a tiny house. No, but they're a lot cheaper than a house. Um, under this proposal, do we need to put in, or should we put in tiny houses, or?
I don't think you need to get that specific. Where we make it flexible by just saying affordable housing, then that gives staff more flexibility to write, you know, proposals to where it's geared towards overall affordable housing. And if we start narrowing that down, then it's not as effective.
Okay, okay. I was just curious.
Vice Mayor? Yeah, I was just looking at the first-time home buyer. I'm trying to wrap my arms around the fact that you can get up to 70,000, but you're looking at very low, low to moderate income. How can they afford even 70,000 mortgage? I'm not, I'm not understanding that there. Tell me how that...
The up to 70,000, and that's based upon income categories, there's different brackets.
Right.
Uh, so the 70,000 would be for our very low and extremely low category, and that is, goes towards buying down the principal and closing costs so that they get that purchase price down to an affordable.
No, I I understand that, but you're actually talking about them having a mortgage, right? Plus, they're going to have to pay the 70,000 back.
No, they don't have to pay the 70,000 back. That's a forgivable loan.
Okay, you got five to 20, zero interest is forgivable, and how is that forgivable?
It amateurizes over those terms. So depending if they got the full 70,000, then we're looking at a 15-year term. Right. And it amateurizes over that, a percentage per year. So if they stayed the full 15 years in the home, they would owe nothing.
So if if they stayed for the term, then they don't have...
Correct.
Okay. But, so there's no monthly payments for them?
That's correct. There's no monthly payment for the city side, right? It's just what we call a deferred loan, so there's really no payment, there's no interest, provided there's no default.
Okay, so if they've got a home that they want to purchase, the home is 140,000, they can get up to 70,000.
They will get up to 70,000, an amount that makes the home affordable. We're not going to oversubsidize.
If they're, and you say this is for very low income.
Yes, sir.
So can a very low income family afford 70,000? A 70,000 mortgage? Question. It's 140,000, right? Now you got 70,000. Can they afford a 70,000 mortgage based on all the other things they have to pay for to live?
Um, I can say we've had very low close on homes, so, um, with the assistance, you know, obviously, they're not going to be able to go out depending on their debt ratios and buy a 300,000 house.
Right.
You know, so it all comes into play with their debt ratios, how many, how much debt they have outside of their first mortgage.
Yeah, I I guess my big concern is, you only have 300,000.
Yeah, currently, we only, it's 40,000. So we are increasing it to 70, yes.
Yeah. It just seems like, and and we, we know houses cost now, I mean, even fixer-ups, we were saying 140,000, but, you know, I mean, I I know a person who bought a house three years ago, 385, he just sold it for 600,000 three years later. So it's not like prices, even with low fixer-ups, you know, and...
It's also kind of a numbers game, because when we have to consider that 75% of the funds have to go for construction.
Right.
We have to budget and set those limitations so that we know when we give someone 70,000, we can still meet that, those set-asides. And so there's a lot of back behind-the-scenes tracking that we have to do.
Yes, if I may. A lot of these dollars are set, uh, set forth, and nonprofits come in and get these dollars and use that 70,000 and pull other dollars in to establish low-income housing. It is, all of it's not necessarily, doesn't necessarily go forth to an individual family. It is an opportunity for a, uh, a nonprofit to come in and and be creative and do, and maybe create two or three homes with that 70,000 or whatever.
I I appreciate what you're doing. I've called you on occasion to ask what's important for some, found some way to, I at least look into things, but I appreciate what you do. I appreciate you, you doing this. It's just, it bothers me that we can't help more. We, we don't want anybody to be house poor either in the house, and they can't even afford heat.
True. It's, it's a balancing act.
Yeah, yeah.
And you have a balancing act every day. Like I said in the last week, I've sent you two, and you've done some great things with them, but the housing market is getting tougher and tougher. And as you guys noted clearly, the the money that sounded good 10 years ago is, it's tough. Um, with that, I see no more. Call the cards, please.
Dan Johnston?
And I hope that this will not be considered babbling, right? Uh, because, uh, I'm going to say something similar to what I said before, but in this case, it's different, uh, is that, uh, when I was talking about water resources, now I'm talking about, uh, social services and being handled by, uh, Terry Franklin, and I also talk differently when I talk about public works being talked, being handled by Kevin Cook. I give both public works and, uh, social services an A-plus. Not because of, uh, it's it's public works or or because it's social services, because of its management and the people who are doing it. Whereas when I talked about another division, I did not give it very high marks at all. That makes a difference. So in this particular case with, uh, uh, this, uh, ship program, um, I'm certainly, I'm especially in, um, approval of it because Terry Franklin's been in this for, I don't know how long, but, uh, I don't know, it seems like for forever. And, uh, what would, what would we do without her? Um, and maybe it's not forever, but, uh, and and, uh, the thing is, is so, so she's a very valuable, uh, and she's, she's done a lot of work on this. So, uh, she knows so much about it, and that, uh, I hate to ask questions about it because she knows so much, uh, I won't even, I won't even understand the answers she gives me. Uh, it gets so complicated. So, uh, I'm very much for this, uh, uh, local housing assistance, this, this item nine A, because of the management and the, for the long-term, uh, uh, let's say, reputation that she has built for this, for this particular, and and so, uh, when you consider that, is that when I was talking before, I don't consider it babbling at all. We've got problems. We've got big problems in the city, uh, but, uh, thank goodness, we've got some, some really good, good, uh, people, like, for example, uh, Mr. Cook and, uh, Mrs. Franklin and, I don't know this young lady, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. Next card?
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you for staying on topic. That was solid. Um, we need a motion. That's your job.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we approve, um, item nine A, local housing assistance plan years 2022, 2024 ship program.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Jordan and a second from Member Nelson. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yeah.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes, with a big thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Mayor, there was also a resolution with that.
Say again?
There was also a resolution that needs to be approved, with that resolution six 2022.
Six 2022.
Is that separate? All right, then, let me finish the first part. That motion passed. Move on to the second one.
Second.
I have a motion from, uh, Vice Mayor, second from Member Nelson. Roll call vote again.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
That motion also passes unanimously with a big thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, City Manager?
On to, uh, nine B, which is ordinance number seven, 2022, relating to home-based businesses. This is the first reading. Uh, the city attorney will do the first reading.
Ordinance number seven, 2022, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 28 zoning, specifically amending sections 28-342 accessory use table and 28-360 home-based business, adding home-based business as a limited use in Indian River City Neighborhood Commercial IRC NC Zoning District and amending standard for home-based businesses, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances for an effective date and for incorporation into the code.
This is the first of two required public hearings. The second public hearing is scheduled to be conducted by City Council at their March 22, 2022, begin at 6:30. At the two March 2022, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance and recommended approval as presented seven zero. Ms. Busak is here to answer any questions that you may have on this ordinance number seven, 2022.
Can you give me a summary? I'm trying to quite honestly understand the difference.
Sure.
It says Indian River City.
Oh, let's go to the first one, home-based business.
Okay.
Okay, yes. Basically, the stat, state statute changed and said that the regulation of businesses for home-based business, um, is going to be restricted, that, that local governments are not allowed to put a lot of restrictions on home-based businesses. I think this was done during the COVID lockdown, and people began to say they'd like to expand their home-based business. So these amendments are consistent with the statutory requirements. And the change to Indian River City is because Indian River City, uh, that's the commercial, actually allows residences. So everywhere that there's a residence, there's a lot, the state says you can put a home-based business. So that's what that addition is for.
Very good. Uh, Vice Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay, no worries. Um, nobody else? I remember Robinson.
Hey, Peggy, could, and looking at all of this list, could you just kind of tell me, I, I know that they uh, uh, the home-based business have to comply with uh, any other business and they will be subject to periodic inspections?
Actually, uh, they, the only home-based business that um, we believe may be subject to inspections would be related to uh, nursing, I mean, sorry, um, childcare facilities. But for instance, if you wanted to be an insurance agent, the difference in what the statute requires and what we used to require is that you were not allowed to have anyone come to your home. You could simply have your office there. Now, not only can you have people come to your home, but you can have two employees work in the, in the home. The difference is, um, what we, what they hope will protect the neighborhood is that the parking has to be the same as would be in a residence. And the house still has to look like a residence, that kind of thing. I think where we're really going to see a lot of issues is people who are repairing cars and things like that at a home-based business. Um, so right now that, when that happens, it's always they're repairing someone's cousin's or brother's a vehicle. So we do have some of that that happens right now, but um, if it's, if the house still looks like a house, then you're allowed to have a home-based business. So we used to restrict home-based businesses to a certain variety of activities. For instance, you couldn't have a veterinary use, you couldn't have a taxidermist, you couldn't have um, several other things. Now, if you'd like to do any of those things, you can certainly do that.
Any advisement on when ATMOs, uh, how is that going to flow with, uh, you know, ATM? Do you know?
Oh, home, oh, well, we don't enforce homeowners associations.
I mean, I'm, do you?
Yes.
I'm just asking for, I know you don't enforce it, but I'm just.
Well.
Just, I'm, as a suggest, I mean.
In my experience, homeowners associations don't like to enforce the rules because they have to, they, it, it's expensive and they're their neighbors. So they really depend on the city, but we will not be able to do that.
And, and as a reminder to council, this was Florida legislature that passed this and every city has to come into compliance with this.
Yeah.
Good reminder.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I wasn't asking, I know you were, that's not part of us, but I just asked, you know, what did you think of that?
Down the road thought, but yet um, a good reminder too that it's a state legislative action. Um, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, um, what is the penalty for not getting a BTR?
Code enforcement would go out there and then the um, requirement is that it would be, if you don't come into compliance, which you certainly could within the thirty days or whatever they give you, come in. Uh, home-based business generally is about a hundred dollars a year. If you did not do that, then they could fine you a certain number of um, dollars a day until you did.
And, and the code enforcement would have to be generated from a complaint. So we, we're not knocking on doors and looking to see.
So if someone comes and say, I'm working on cars and someone doesn't like it, and the neighbor can call code enforcement, they'll come out and say, show me your BTR. Can you add to your home by, your trailer in front of your home, say this is from my home?
What the regulation says is that the home-based business activities must be conducted at the residential dwelling. So if you were to put a mobile home behind that, you could not. And that again is statute language.
Okay, thank you.
I see no other comments. We do not, uh, will, we don't vote on this one. Next thing you know, we're B, C, and D. We will take no action. Uh, do we have any cards?
Yes, sir. Um, Stan Johnston? Item B.
B. Yeah, this is the first reading. There's no action being taken. That, that's your call, sir. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Um, City Manager?
Onto nine C, which is uh, ordinance number eight twenty twenty-two relating to the corrections related to townhouses in the Indian River City zoning district. And city attorney will read ordinance number eight twenty twenty-two.
Ordinance number eight twenty twenty-two, an ordinance of the city of Tiesville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances to correct an internal inconsistency related to townhomes by amending section twenty-eight dash eighty-one townhomes. Remove townhomes as a conditional use in the Indian River City neighborhood commercial IRC NC zoning district. Providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date and for incorporation into the code.
This is the first of two required public hearings. The second required public hearing is scheduled to be conducted by city council on their twenty-two March twenty twenty-two, beginning at six thirty. At the two March twenty twenty-two, the planning and zoning commission considered this ordinance and recommended approval as presented seven zero.
All right, uh, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just a, a quick question. Did we not say that we wanted to have a time between council vote and then? It wasn't going to be on the same night? Correct? How to remember a conversation?
Yeah, w- once it's voted, uh, the ordinance is signed by the mayor. It's, it's actually adopted when you vote.
Okay, I, I thought we were.
Well, I think they were talking about was we couldn't do a CUP on an ordinance that hadn't been adopted yet. So if it's, they're on the same night, that wouldn't work.
Right, we had discussed trying to have the same path for a CUP in an ordinance or an approval that required that CUP to be approved running on the same path. We couldn't do that because you can't evaluate an application based on a CUP till that CUP is approved.
Okay.
All right, anybody else on that one? We, again, take no action on this. Uh, cards?
Stan Johnston?
Not ten minutes, but you can certainly come, uh, thank you, sir. Moving right along. Thank you, Stan. Um, City Manager?
Onto item number nine D, which is ordinance number nine twenty twenty-two relating to solar facilities. And the city attorney will read this ordinance.
Ordinance number nine twenty twenty-two, an ordinance of the city of Tiesville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances, chapter twenty-eight zoning. Allow solar facilities as a permitted use in the general use GU light industrial services and warehousing M one, industrial M two, highway industrial infill M three and planned industrial development PID zoning districts by amending section twenty-eight dash fifty-four use table and creating section twenty-eight dash two fifty-five point five solar facility. Providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date and incorporation into the code.
This is the first of two required public hearings. The second public hearing is scheduled to be heard by the city council on twenty-two March twenty twenty-two at six thirty. At the two March twenty twenty-two, planning and zoning commission, they considered this ordinance and recommended approval as presented seven zero. Ms. Busaka is here to answer questions. This is another Florida legislative um, requirement.
Okay, another good point. Uh, Council, any questions? I see none. Um, again, first reading, no action tonight. Uh, call the cards, please.
We have two cards. William Young?
William Young, six twelve Indian River Avenue, Tiesville, Florida. Uh, I, I don't quite understand. Uh, I'm, I, I just heard what you're saying here and it's all new to me. I didn't know this was going on. But what is a solar facilities? I don't know what that is. Does anybody know what it is?
Solar facility is uh, a production facility for electric power as described in section one sixty-three point three two oh five Florida statutes.
So that's like a utility power plant?
Correct. That is not the one on your home.
Not the one on my home?
No, sir.
Okay, so I'm okay with having one on my home, but what we're doing here now is allowing someone to build a, like an FPL?
Yes, sir.
Power plant um,
It, well.
In the city.
A solar facility, yes, sir.
In the city.
Yes, sir.
This is allowing that?
Yes, sir.
Then this is a state mandate.
Yes.
This is not, this is not our initiative.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand what, what it was.
I got you, I got you.
So um, okay, so the state is allowing this to happen and we've got to approve, approve and make it part of it. Okay. Thank you.
Kind of how that works.
Wonder what it was.
Thank you very much. Next card, please.
Um, last card is Stan Johnston.
Thank you, sir. Uh, City Manager?
Uh, we are on to uh, eleven A, which is the uh, re- resolution seven twenty twenty-two establishing audit services selection committee and selection of a committee chairman. Staff is recommending approval of this resolution establishing a three-member audit selection committee for the perfect, purpose of selecting an auditor to conduct the required annual financial audit, naming members of the government governing board as a chairman. So this is again another state mandated requirement that we're.
Okay, another state mandate has come our way, so understand that. Another unfunded mandate, which is fine. But clear me up on this again. I asked the same question last time. What exactly are we approving and doing with this?
So what you're doing tonight is you're approving the resolution that we create this committee. So then we, staff will come back to you with um, the required applications to serve on this committee, which you will approve and select the committee. And then at that same meeting, you'll select a member of the governing body to chair the, the committee.
So all we're doing tonight is approving the resolution that the state's mandated, pretty much that we pass anyway.
Yep.
Okay, um, uh, any other questions? I don't see anything. Um, again, this is a state mandate. Uh, the word mandate fits here?
It's a state requirement that the legislature.
State requirement mandate, same thing. I don't want to hear it from the state calling me and saying you're not correct, so. Um, any cards?
Dan Johnston?
And I know uh, Member Stokel monitors as, as well as we do. There's a lot of more coming this year as well.
Wow. All right, here we go.
Stan Johnston, I'm, I'm not going to mention names this time. Uh, last time I spoke on this, it was not pleasant, so, so the, the problem that we have here.
Clerk, get the clock, please.
What happened?
They didn't, they didn't start the clock.
Oh, I'm sorry. Should I take some time off?
You got extra time.
Oh, golly. Take a break. Okay, so what's going on in here is in the city of Tiesville, we have some serious problems without mentioning people's names. Uh, there's this, uh, there's several posters, like the poster I have back here. The poster, this poster right here is, is of special interest. It says uh, uh, seventy thousand dollars that the city spent on something that doesn't exist. And uh, that's a pretty big thing and it has to do with ORB eighty-five oh six, page thirteen seventy-four, if you want to look it up. And it's on video to YouTube and so forth. It has to do with fraud. And it has to do with the city manager. And not you, buddy, that other mayor, okay? Okay, so, so uh, we've had some serious problems of, of, uh, the word might be used as dishonesty. Dishonesty in dishonesty, can you believe dishonesty in the, in Space Coast capital of the world? Oh! And, and then we had, then, then we had some, some uh, uh, we had this, this right here. Where is it? Right here. And uh, we had sewage spillage, sewage, sewage spillage and so forth in, in the city of Tiesville. Millions of gallons going in for four months that was reported, only lasted for about four days instead of four months. And that, that was another thing of case of what? That's what it was. Same thing, dishonesty. Oh! Okay, so, so then we had, then we had about the same time, simultaneous with that, we, we had, we had sewage spray. Sewage spray in the Manati Dine and, and, and sewage spray back in December and uh, uh, four months after that. Spray on people. And we couldn't turn it off. We couldn't turn the fountains off. We sprayed people with that. And of course, it wasn't in the newspapers. But we had another case of what? This is a case of what? Dishonesty. And now we're looking at a, an issue right now. Auditing and so forth, like a financial auditing, and we're looking for what? The, uh, this dishonesty, that is honesty. Where are we going to find it? That's the question. Where are we going to find honesty for this? Because we can see that it seems like the city of Tiesville is saturated with dishonesty. That's what I see. And I am upset about that because this is my hometown. So I'm hopeful that you guys will sometimes, somebody straighten up. May God have mercy on you. But we need it here. Thank you.
Okay. Any other cards? I have none.
Yep.
All right, I, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we approve resolution number seven dash twenty twenty-two establishing a three-member audit selection committee for the purpose of selecting an audit to conduct the required annual financial audit. Naming a member of the governing board as the chairperson.
I have, I have a motion from Vice Mayor, a second from Member Robinson. Roll call vote.
Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson is absent. Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero. New business, City Manager?
Onto uh, twelve A, which is advisability on billboards abutting I ninety-five rights of way. On uh, twenty-five January twenty twenty-two, city council received a request from a citizen to consider amending the billboard regulations for properties abutting I ninety-five. Staff has provided several options to council and we would like to have you provide guidance to us. And we'll come back with, uh, may, maybe come back or maybe not, come back with uh, an adjustment to that. Ms. Busaka is here to answer questions that you may have regarding this initiative.
Ms. Busaka, can you remind us of the main points?
I can.
Of concern?
Uh, they, there are regulations currently related to billboards and the speaker who came said that the issue is the, there's a minimum lot size of one acre and the billboard is the only use of the property. The minimum lot size is not subject to a variance, so there's no choice. And there's a minimum frontage along a paved road of two hundred feet, which is also not subject to a variance. So the request was made, can only along I ninety-five, could a billboard share a use with another, uh, share a piece of property with another use? Because currently you can have a one hundred acre parcel up against ninety-five and you can have a billboard on it. And it has to have a frontage and there's no variances permitted. So what the staff is suggesting here that if you would choose to want to make these more flexible, the three issues that you have to think about are, do you allow billboards along ninety-five to co-locate with other uses on the same parcel? Should the minimum lot size be determined by the zoning district that it's sitting in rather than this one acre minimum? And do you want to require the minimum lot frontage for billboards on a paved road? And I know that the gentleman who came to speak to you is here, so.
Right, right.
Also, if this will help you, I have a list of the five billboards and maps to show you where they are. If that would help you, I'll distribute that.
It would. It would. Um, any council comments at this time? While she's handing that out, um, clerk, can you call the card? Hold on, hold on one second. I got a couple of members, not yet. Uh, Member Nelson?
I sort of have no problem with a, a billboard sharing a use on a piece of property. Because maybe it's me. God's work. And Dad always had billboards on the pastures and he got a hundred acres and a billboard. So to me, that's not totally crazy. Um, to turn around and say, if you have a hundred acres and you can only have one billboard on it, that seems crazy. So I think for me, at least for ninety-five, we either need to say that, and I don't know which is better, that either you could have more than one use or that there's less area for a billboard. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I think.
I don't know the answer, so.
Right, I think that the question that was asked by the original person was, let's do both. Let's allow, for instance, to put a um, hotel on the site that has a billboard on it.
So maybe do either A or B kind of thing?
Again, I, I don't want to speak for this individual. When they came forward for the first time, they thought that it would be acceptable. When they came forward for the first time, they thought that it would be acceptable to have a billboard facing I-95 and have a use like a hotel on it, that the people in the hotel probably wouldn't mind having a billboard. The billboard standards that currently exist say that billboards cannot face residential areas, so.
That I understand.
Right. And we're not talking about anything except these five billboards, because currently, a billboard is a non-conforming use, so we're not going to be seeing any new billboards in the city unless the code is changed.
Yeah, and to play on that, and then I'll get to you, Member Robinson, is I believe the last time we heard about this, we were all kind of saying, well, wow, I didn't know that, that's kind of ridiculous. So I think this coming before us is we want to fix some of this, it may not be absurd, but it was close. Uh, Member Robinson?
Yes, and, and one acre is a lot of, you know, area to be covered, but are we going to decide what that, we still going to have to decide what that distance can be between the billboard and whatever else is going to be on that property?
Yes, sir, that would be a good idea if you allow the use to be up against, on the same parcel. Now, if you said that you can make a much smaller parcel, then the setbacks could be from the parcel boundaries. But if you allow them on the same parcel, then yes, there would have to be some kind of setback between the billboard.
And that's the only thing that I would be concerned about, is that one, you know, one acre taking up a little, you know, one thing, but we still have to set some standards and boundaries to make it happen. What those would be, I would guess that staff would have to kind of research and check with, uh, other areas, or is there a possibility for a storm hazard or something that may happen if the billboard takes flight?
We could certainly do that research, absolutely. Currently, billboards have to be set back a minimum of twenty-five feet from all property lines, so what we would probably do is look at the billboard setback, and then whatever the setback was of the, of the use from the separate, and that might be, for instance, fifty feet, twenty-five on each parcel, but we could certainly identify that, yes, sir.
But that's what I would be, you know, who I'm taking, thank you.
Um, Member Stokel?
Yes. Peggy, with this list, um, we have five highlighted, what are those five indicating?
Those are the five that parcels that are, those are the five billboards that are on I-95.
Okay.
You have four maps, because the large parcel, which is the last one, has two billboards on it, and that's because there's actually two parcels there. It's just shown as one under the property appraiser because they have common ownership, and they are required to be at least, I think it's fifteen hundred feet apart.
So if we were to make any changes or provide advisability, it would be possible to just do it for those particular areas without impacting the other billboard spots?
That is correct. That staff is recommending this stay only on the I-95 corridor.
That would be, yes.
And I would mention that the smallest little sliver you see there is the city of Titusville's property, so I doubt that that would ever have any other use on it.
Gotcha. Okay, so then we're looking at just four pieces in theory?
That's right.
Okay. Yeah, that's kind of where I was going with it. I feel like I-95 has different aesthetics.
Absolutely.
Um, so I feel like this would be something that I would like to look into, not necessarily touch any of the other ones.
Uh, city clerk, call the cards, please.
We have one card. It's Woody Rice.
I knew he had a card.
Woody Rice, five oh five Indian River Avenue, and, uh, first of all, thank you for taking this under consideration. And when it came to you a few weeks ago, what I was envisioning was to do exactly that, isolate it to the I-95 corridor. That made a lot of sense to me when I read the ordinance. Option one was sort of where I was heading, allow dual use on the same property, okay? But option three, I would say there, you know, maybe a good option, it's a little different. Currently, the code says that the parcel for billboards has to have so much road frontage. Well, I-95 doesn't count as road frontage because it's not accessible, so, so it doesn't count. I think a hybrid saying that you must have so much I-95 road frontage would make sense to me. When it comes to separation of different uses on the property, I would sort of go after what we're allowed to do with buildings. When you have another building, there's always a separation for, because of fire codes, okay? And typically, it's twenty feet, okay? Separation from one building to the next, that's the minimum. So those are just some of my ideas and some of the vision that I had when I came in front of you requesting this, but I appreciate your support.
Well, I will say that I appreciated your first, I don't want to call it presentation, but your first words and brought this to our attention, that some of the things did seem absurd to me, some of the acreage needed for a billboard. And I like the fact that it's been brought to us, and I think that we'll be able to come up with some more common sense thoughts there, so I appreciate that. Uh, Member Nelson?
This is curiosity here. So if you're going down ninety-five, you don't want the billboards, I would think, close together, because you're not going to really be able to take the one billboard in and have the other zoom by you. Is there, how do you figure out how far apart you want the billboards?
Well, I mean, the, you know, I didn't realize there was one site that apparently, or actually, you said that it was two parcels, so they're not, they're on two separate parcels, but the code said fifteen hundred feet for separation between billboards. I don't know of any billboards in the site that I was interested in that has any restrictions like that. It's a three-acre site is the one that, that was, was a problem, and, and to take up all three acres for one single billboard just didn't seem right to me.
Yeah.
And we were trying, we are trying to cohabitate that with a, a hotel on the site. Uh, I agree that, you know, there's several things you can do. One, road frontage on I-95, because that's what it's about, it's an I-95 corridor. It needs to face I-95. I think all those are legitimate concerns.
Okay.
All right, thank you. We're looking to do an advisability, so I guess that's what we need to do. So, Member Nelson, your light's still lit up, so start advising.
Oh, okay. So I'm, I'm looking at some space along ninety-five where you really get the visual, uh, and then some setback from whatever, a hotel or a building, whatever. Some, obviously, some setback from the road.
Not seeing a lot of billboard ideas here. Um, I, 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 I just want to get away from some of the absurdity we heard of, you have to have X number of acres to put a billboard up. I like what Member Nelson said, um, you know, I think basically that we keep it simple and stay away from the, the odd setbacks and the number of acres you need to put a billboard. I mean, what I heard, I don't remember, it was five acres, I think it was some crazy thing. So, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I think what I'm hearing is option three would probably be the best one.
Right. That's what I feel.
My plan was to do all three and let you choose. If you wanted to do all three, you could. You could say that because the minimum lot size by the zoning code makes it very easy, whatever your zoning is, that's your minimum lot, you wouldn't have to, you would also want to allow a lot perhaps if you had, such as Mr. Rice suggested, a three-acre lot, and you have room for the billboard and the other use. And then the third would be not having a required three-hundred-foot frontage on a paved road, but we could say that you have to have a minimum frontage on I-95. Again, there will, unless the code is amended in a not, not a way that I'm suggesting here, there will be no new billboards in the city of Titusville. They're currently non-conforming, so we are talking about those five billboards.
Okay.
So what did you just say?
I said that I suggest that we not require the one-acre minimum. We just say the minimum's whatever the zoning codes, the zoning is on that site.
Right.
We not require the paved road frontage of three hundred feet. What we do require some minimum frontage on I-95, and that the third would be that you may put more than one use on a parcel of land.
Yes.
Based on, if you can fit it. So I, we can develop an ordinance that would say that, we can advertise it, and we try to advertise it enough so that if a good idea comes along, we still have some flexibility as well.
Perfect. You advised us, that's right.
Okay. I know what to do.
It's a tricky one. It's not something I can even really get a good visual, visual on, so I appreciate that. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Busaka. Thank you for your words there, Mr. Rice. And, um, city manager?
On to item twelve B under New Business, which is the Tree City USA Growth Award. The Arbor Day Foundation provides the Tree City USA Growth Award to participating Tree City USA communities that demonstrate a higher level of tree care and community engagement during the calendar year. Communities applying for recertification are also eligible to apply for a growth award during the renewal process. The Growth Award recognizes major milestones and annual activities in five categories that combine to build a sustainable community forestry program over the long term. Each activity has a value between one and ten points. The communities must document activities that totals ten points from any of the subcategories to receive a growth award for the calendar year. Although two or three activities are sufficient to receive the award, the TEC has requested staff complete all eight activities listed below. TEC also recommends the city council provide advisability to pursue the Tree City USA Growth Award with an emphasis on pursuing the following categories which are listed in your packet.
Uh, Ms. Busaka, anything you can add to that?
Sir, I'll answer any questions I can.
Uh, Member Robinson?
Yes, um, I, I know, can we, I think somewhere it came, can we just use about, narrow it down to that we select ten of all of those and?
Well, what staff would recommend is that we pursue the award to earn the ten points.
That, that, yeah, I get the ten.
Yes, and we will look at the categories and determine which we, you know, can pursue with our current staffing levels.
Yes, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, that was just going to be my question, whether you had the resources to do something.
We don't, to do all eight categories.
Right, so I think you need to do what's reasonable, the nice to have.
And we also, we want to apply for the award, there's no doubt, and, you know, that's what we're asking council, do you want us to apply for the award? That's what TEC recommends, and we will put together the packet that applies for that.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. We've come too far with, we talked all about our years together working trees. We certainly want to continue on and do our part to receive the award and show our good faith towards the award and our trees, so. I also understand that staff has some limitations and can't just get them all done, so you get done what you can there and make sure we get all the points we can. Um, Member Robinson?
Oh, I'm, I-
Member Nelson?
Oh, I agree. I'd like to see us go for the award. Some of the stuff didn't seem to apply to us, but I know, like, grants, the tree planting program, and working with service organizations would be absolutely fantastic. And I'll, I'll volunteer a Rotary Club to help out.
If we get, and truthfully, and this is not even on there, and I'll just put that out there real quick since you said that, I would love to see more clubs, including ours, do a little bit of an adopt a road thing. I know that we're not thirty-five years old anymore, but I think we can still get some things done, and I like doing that kind of stuff, so we'll talk about that later, that's not pertinent here. Cards, please.
Dan Johnston.
Thank you, sir. Next card, please.
Kay St. Ang.
Kay St. Ang, Maryland Avenue. The Titusville Environmental Commission is to be commended for their recommendation of pursuit of the Tree City USA Growth Award for twenty twenty-two. To receive a growth award at Tree City must undertake activities that represents major milestones to build a sustainable community forest program. City planners have recommended pursuit of the award as a means by which the TEC can undertake its responsibilities as the tree board to develop a plan for care, preservation, and planting of trees in parks, along streets, and in all other public areas per the land development regulations. Planting or conserving trees is a natural way to mitigate polluted stormwater from developments and roads. Each tree plays an important role in stormwater management to reduce polluted stormwater discharge into the lagoon on which our economy depends. The Tree City USA Growth Award activities that TEC has recommended to council have been selected carefully from a list of eighty-one possible activities. These are seven recommended activities would provide a framework for a community forestry program required by the Tree City USA standards. Each recommended activity is part of the framework to provide funding for a tree planting program on public lands to help maintain the citywide tree canopy and mitigate for trees' loss through development. Departmental communication is one of the activities, so the departments work with TEC to coordinate an urban forestry program as part of the framework. TEC expects to provide structure to proposed activities. Much preliminary planning and assessment has already been undertaken. A twenty-thirteen urban forest master plan has been provided, and an urban tree canopy assessment grant has been received. The community service organization, the Titusville Tree Team, has led the way with volunteer mangrove plantings in Sandpoint Park and Marina Park, as well as planting of a hundred and fifteen trees at Chain of Lakes Park, at all, at no cost to the city or the county. These planning events would qualify for the recommended activity E-seven service organizations. But they, they've chosen these activities to build a program, so if you just selectively choose three out of the seven, you, you've eliminated the program, that is, the entirety of the seven activities that they've carefully selected. The Tree City USA Growth Award is presented to communities that demonstrate increased levels of tree care and community engagement that you're seeing right now. Our community is engaged with regards to trees. A Tree City USA Growth would demonstrate Titusville's commitment to the environment and position the community as an attractive place to live. Please accept, one more sentence.
Go ahead.
Please accept TEC's recommendation for a pursuit of a Tree City USA Growth Award and the seven activities that they're recommending as part of a framework for a community forest program that is required by the Tree City USA and the land development regulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I see no questions. Thank you very much. Next card, please.
Tony Chifalo.
Hey, Tony Chifalo, seven fifteen Tropic Street. I'm here to say several things. Let me get my head together. I'm on a citizen advisory board that advises to council on, on issues, and at our last monthly meeting, our agenda was only fourteen pages, and I've been at city council meetings where your agenda is over nine hundred pages of War and Peace, you know, has nothing on that. So I would recommend, I'm here to recommend that save yourselves a lot of problems and listen to your citizen advisory boards, because we had plenty of time in our month to go over our fourteen pages and make recommendations. TEC has spent a lot of time, too, listening not only to Kay and the tree team, which I'm sure you guys are all getting very familiar with. They carefully considered all eighty-one of the projects that could be done to make the USA Tree City Growth Award possible and sustainable over a period of time, not just to say, okay, this year we got ten points. Now, next year, what are we going to do? Because this is an ongoing project, and it's an ongoing award, and if we want to be a tree city, we're going to have to start doing some things with trees, you know? And the eight, I've heard eight, Kay says seven, so I'm going to go with that, because I think one of the projects has already been done. We've already done a couple of things, you know, with the tree plantings, the- We've already done a couple of things, you know, with the tree plantings, the, at Chain of Lakes and at Sandpoint Park, you were there with your shovel. We're well on the way. It's not going to be hard to get the 10 points. But I just want to emphasize and suggest that you do go with the recommendation of the TEC because they gave a lot of consideration. I went to those meetings, too. And believe me, their agendas are not over 900 pages. And they had time to consider the various projects that could be done to get points and to make a program that will go not only this year, but will help us in the future. So I would say just down and dirty, okay, take the TEC recommendations and go with it.
Can we just say, put it like this, we'll do the best we can to get all of, everything done, everything that we could possibly do.
I have 14 seconds. It doesn't all have to be done this year. We only need point, 10 points this year. We've already got, how many, Kay? We've already got?
We've got four already.
We've got them. It's just to continue the program.
Thank you.
Okay, that works.
Well, you know, and I, and I'm sure there'll be a motion that basically says, we want to, we want to do this. I see no way in the world we're not going to want to do this. And then with staff's availability, we get the 10 points, and if there's more availability, we do more points. But we definitely want to get to the, the first threshold, and that's how it works. You go from, get the first one, and then you get to the second one, and you go from there. With that, any more cards?
One more card, Kathleen Perez.
You're limping.
What?
You're limping.
Yeah, I missed, it hasn't been a good week, I messed up my foot.
Okay.
Hence the crops. It really hasn't been a good week. I spent a lot of the last two weeks sitting with a dying friend. And she passed on Thursday, last Thursday, and I wasn't there because I was waiting for FWC to pull a dead manatee out from behind my house.
I heard.
It was about 10 feet from my backyard. Yeah, so that was, that was fun. And then I went and spent the afternoon working at the Wildlife Refuge, as I always do on Thursday afternoon, and had numerous people ask me, where can I see a manatee? Where can I see a manatee? We don't like to tell them, you know, most of them are dead, but, or anything like that. We say, there might be a few, you know? But that's one of the biggest draws at the refuge. So with that, I'm also going to ask that you adopt the environmental, Titusville Environmental Commission, sorry, that their recommendation. We all know by now, I hope, that trees filter polluted storm water that would otherwise go into the lagoon and further degrade it. The trees that are already in the ground, whether they're 14 inches or this or that, you know, those are free, right? They're already there. All we got to do is have the will to protect them. They're not going to cost us money, they're not going to have an extra tax for the taxpayers to pay, et cetera. They are already there. Some of you probably know that Kay and my husband and a bunch of other people planted the trees mentioned by Tony, 115 trees. And Kay and my husband and a few other people have been watering them every week for hours on end, for months at a time, to keep them alive. And it's kind of amazing that the citizens here are the ones planting the trees. They're, they're finding the trees, they're planting them, they're watering them, okay? They've already done all that for you because that's how badly they want trees and shade, okay? And cleaner lagoon. So please let the TEC guide you because most of them speak for us, the citizens of Titusville. I, I say most because I, I do have a concern that many people have about Mr. Woody Rice sitting on planning and zoning as well as Titusville Environmental Commission. And one of the recent meetings, he actually asked to have the tree ordinance changed. He was the one behind saying, let's change the survey rules. He was sitting on planning and zoning, but he admitted on camera, because this would affect me, a project I'm working on right now. That is a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. With that, maybe more cards, that's what I should ask for. No more cards. Uh, ready? We need, I need a motion.
No, we're, we're good.
Do we have to vote on this? Hold on. I kind of really do want to vote on it.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess all we can do is provide direction. My direction is we vote on it. All right, well, we'll, we'll go with that. So we've provided direction. We want to, we want to do this thing, and, and we certainly understand the limitations of staff, but as we noted, some of them can be clicked right off. So what we can do, let's get to 10 quick and see if we can go past it. All right, thank you so much, I appreciate it. All those in favor? I got to vote? All right, with that, city manager?
Uh, petitions and requests.
Petitions and requests for the public, please.
Nathan Sleschke, 868, 6D Allendale Street. I actually want to talk about land development regulation number 28-63. Specifically what it, oh, specifically what it is, is for agriculture. I wrote an essay about a week ago. I'm concerned with the agriculture products we're going to be able to get in the next 12 months. Not we as a city, but we as citizens, we as businesses. I believe, and it's a personal opinion, I believe in bubbles in the supply chain right now, and I'm scared these bubbles are going to get bigger. So I really want us to focus on local. I love local business, I love growing local stuff. However, Titusville law prohibits the growth and sale of agriculture products within the city limits unless you are zoned GU. So every other zoning out there bans the ability to grow things and package them and sell them. With my fear of the future of what could possibly happen, I would like to see if we can amend this use table to allow people, or, I don't want to say communities, I want to say allow people, if they have a commercial property or industrial property or a residential property or whatever we decide, to grow food, package it, and sell it in local markets and local stores. But as of right now, we have one zoning, one zoning, what do you call it, use that allows for it. And every other one is completely prohibited.
Taking that in, that's, I mean, the silence doesn't mean good luck, it just means that's interesting and well stated. So what else? I mean, it's your time.
It's pretty basic tonight.
It's your time, yeah.
No, no, it's pretty basic. I would like people to be able to, to grow food, package it, and sell it to local and keep, because right now we are 100%, every citizen here is 100% dependent on people who don't live here to feed them. 100%, unless you are GU zone. Which I don't think we have a huge area of GU zoning within city limits. So yes, we could get it from MEMS or Port St. John or Scottsboro, some of the surrounding areas, but I would like Titusville to be able to say, hey, we grow our own food here. And if you've studied the advancements of agriculture and aquaponic and hydroponic technologies, the cost is reducing. I, I mean, we have just bought a tower garden for our own house to grow food inside outside. It's, it's advancing quickly. And if we can take old buildings, or if someone has the ability and could say, hey, I can take an old building, line it with 37 tower gardens, and provide all the tomatoes that this restaurant needs. Now that restaurant isn't reliant on tomatoes from Kansas. And I would like it to stay in Titusville, if possible, if people choose to. There we go.
There you go.
There you go.
With passion. So good job, thank you.
Thank you.
And appreciate it. Any other petitions or requests? I don't think anybody else is out there. Nope, so we move to mayor and council reports. Right? All right, let's start down there with Ms. Stokel, member Stokel, roll this way.
Hello.
Uh-oh.
I got about, no, I'm just kidding. I will have more for you probably at our next meeting or the meeting following session should be wrapping up, I believe, on the 11th, so this is the last week. So I should be getting a summary. As the city manager said, there are some not so great items. However, I will tell you the one good item, that the smoking bill did pass the House and the Senate. It was, I was watching it, like, sitting on the edge of my seat, I'm not going to lie. They did go, it was some interesting discussion, if you ever want to watch those for fun, some of the stuff that gets brought up in there. But now we're just waiting for the governor to sign the smoking bill. So hopefully at least that will be some good news. And then I will have some more for you at probably our next meeting to recap on some of the not so good stuff.
Well, thank you for, thank you for always keeping us up to date on that. Brilliant, truly, you've got a real focus there, and I appreciate it.
Talking about unfunded mandates and just overreach, it's getting, yeah.
Well, we're seeing it in more and more meetings.
Yep.
We're seeing things, and I appreciate city manager pointing out where they came from.
Yeah.
But we had, I think, two or three on the agenda today.
It's just tough to watch because you're, I, I feel like there's good intent there, but there's not enough context of them understanding really the implications of it. So just another complex.
It's that nasty word we like to use, home rule, being deteriorated. Vice Mayor?
Mike. I think we should have at minimum two years strategic planning. I think we should at least, because of how we are on and off the council, that yearly to me is, you don't give the city enough time to accomplish the strategic things that we want to do. So I think we should actually vote it every two years instead of every year. So that's up for discussion.
I, I'm not sure how much discussion we need right now, but I will say that I have mentioned that myself. Matter of fact, I, as much as I loved and appreciated the last session, I will say that it seems like you almost need two years to separate the issues, to separate what's going on in the city at that time. It's just like, sometimes they just run over together, and sometimes they may run over in two years. But I certainly think it's something to discuss. I think that what I've heard is some cities don't even do this, some cities do it every two or three years. We're a very rare city that does it every year. I don't certainly ever want to get rid of it, but I would say that considering it going to every other year is not a bad thing. Member Stokel?
Just to add to that, I think I would be open to it as well. I'd want to know what that process involves, just because we go through the budget process yearly, and if something, hopefully, doesn't happen like COVID again, us to be able to kind of review that during that budget process still would be fine, just for us to be able to discuss that and not be locked in. But if you're talking about like, the community conversation and those things, I, I do think they can be a little repetitive and not sure how much benefit it is. But yeah, I'd be open to that. Just want to make sure every year we are addressing concerns and what our budget looks like, especially with the cost of living being increased now. We would probably need to. That couldn't be like a two-year.
I think one of the, the major things that keeps coming out of the strategic session is communication. And, you know, even with business, communication is extremely important. And you even heard a member of the public say, I didn't know, right? I didn't know, I didn't know. So to me, that's one of the major things that we need to work on. But it keeps coming up every year or two, you know, so.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
And I just have to say, because I, I said it that day when somebody hit me with that, absolutely, I said communication tonight as well. Communication, I get that. But in some cases, I think we do as good a job of communicating as humanly possible. And I can tell you from all the years I spent at Titusville High School, it's amazing to me, even if it's 40 football players, and I've said it 12 times, and I've sent it to the parents or whatever, somebody will come to me and say, nobody told me.
Yep.
So I think we have to understand that word communication, work on it, but I have never been in an organization that ever said, boy, you guys have great communication, we all know everything.
Yeah.
So I'm going to leave it, say that, because I think that what I've seen with our city, our staff, our city manager, Titusville talking points, both online and the magazine, you know, web page, Facebook, you know, but sometimes when you don't know, you got to try to find out. Now, in this case, I, I think it's a very valid point, when the young man came up and said, I didn't know, and he's, he's lived there a long time. It, it's just one of those things. Uh, member Robinson, the member Nelson?
Yes, I would caution, you know, everybody wants to change, then cut down time, but you have, being the newbie on, on the table, is that if you cut things down to just every two years, you're going to find that the experience levels of the people that sit on this diet is, is going to become less.
Good point.
It's going to become less because the rotation, you, that first year, if you fall in on that first year, and, and that's all you get, you're not going to know anything. And in the second year, you're getting more experience because there's going to be those, those rotation time. You're trying to, you, you're cutting away a learning factor, and I think that we need to be very, very careful about that. It, it, it takes up four hours, you know, and, uh, that would be my concern, the experience factor of people being able to truly contribute and understand what's the process here.
On the flip side of that, going into my sixth time at this, I, we did have a, I think, no, we did have in 20, it was just a different form. Sometimes it seems like I could go back to year one and 80% of the stuff was the same being said in year six. Now, some things have really changed, water bills and that kind of thing has, because first thing we heard for a whole year and a half was about water bills. And the thing, gosh, that's, that's shifted on us a little bit. I think what, and I don't want to ever decrease communication, but what I would like to see is maybe a variety. Maybe we do that one year and we have a different kind of gathering the next time. I'm not opposed to gatherings or communication. But, and if we just leave it as it is, I'm good with that.
But also, Mayor, that, that takes, I, I agree with you, it could have some change, but that takes experience as well to be able to change it and make it productive.
City manager's got a lot of experience.
Oh, yes.
No, and I agree, and if it doesn't work out, we, we stay where we're at, but I can, no, I'm with you. So we move down, I'm going to pass, and I'll go to member Nelson for our around the table here.
Okay, for around the table. I, I said this afternoon, I'm only doing good news. So if it's not good news, we're not doing it. So I was at the chamber today, getting tickets for Thursday for the longest table. And what I heard was apparently Eastern Florida has money to start the aeronautics program, and they have part of the money for the aviation program. So I think that's a huge win for our city.
And the mayor, we, we did prepare an endorsement letter that you, you signed.
Right, that's right.
So I, I was very happy to see that because that gives some hope for our kids to be able to find jobs and get the training they need for it, so.
That's good news.
Yeah.
That's awesome. That's, that's huge. Uh, member Robinson?
Well, I didn't do nothing but read what the, what the city manager sent out. I was like some of the, the stats that he sent out about how well we doing compared to the, the rest of the state. And that speaks well of our police department and, and, and the areas of, for the salaries are concerned, I like that. So whatever we, only thing that I say, whatever we doing to make that difference is to be able to stand out, let's continue to do it. That's where I stand.
Thank you. Comes back to me, and I'm going to be the most valuable player and say I have nothing today. I'll pass it off to, I'll pass it off to city manager, and moving on.
In my report, just as a reminder, next Tuesday, we'll have the second workshop of the public, strategic planning. And then glad, happy to, to report that we are adding the annual student award ceremony that we haven't done, I think, in two years now, hasn't? So happy that we're doing that. Just as everybody is noticing the, the price of fuel and other commodities going up, just want to remind council that the city has no local gas tax. We have nothing to do. We have nothing to do with the commodity itself and pricing. We are, you know, the state is at the national average of where it's at right now, at 417. Second is the CPI right now, the cost of living index, was reported today at 9%. So that's, the inflationary pressures have truly sunk in. As you recall, we're building our budget with a cost of living adjustment of 4.2%. So the state of Florida's already announced that they are going to give a five, 5% to 10% raise to all state employees. Uh, second issue, and I think you will all see this in the grocery stores, but we are having problems finding some parts and some operating things that are taking us longer, longer lead times to replace. As an example, in front of Wells Fargo, this is a simple example, but it kind of hits home. A driver took out two of the bollards. We were backordered for nine months to get those bollards replaced. So that's the kind of things we're seeing right now, so it's not that we're not fixing things, we just can't find the parts. So that's kind of the environment we're in right now, and just wanted to report that out to you, and subject to your questions.
Uh, city attorney? And I, you know, we've been reminded we meet here again next Tuesday at 5:30? 5:30. All right, anybody else? I kind of feel like there's something to say, right? I do, meaning adjourned.